Access Channel.
You live?
I didn't even listen to my
Call to order, the December 6th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And this time I'd ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt the agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries unanimously. And we move to our first quasi judicial public hearing. This case is before us tonight because the applicant has requested a revision to the Amberly Glen subdivision. As a reminder to those in attendance tonight, even though we are in the council chambers, an evidentiary hearing is more like a court case. The council acts like the judge and we can only accept evidence that is competent, material, and substantial. The North Carolina and United States constitutions give the applicant certain due process rights in an evidentiary hearing that council must comply with. The constitution really ties our hands on what evidence we can accept. I apologize in advance for what might seem burdensome or a complex process. We will consider competent, material, and substantial evidence from anyone who testified. By law, we can only accept testimony from expert witnesses regarding whether this development will affect property values and whether any increase in traffic resulting from this development will pose a danger to public safety. Those who are with us this evening intending to testify that are not qualified as experts, we can only accept testimony from you on factual issues and what you have observed. Our contractual attorney, who is to my left, will help us determine who's an expert and what evidence we can consider. The hearing procedures in detail are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during the public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. And at this time, we're going to pause just a moment to allow those individuals to speak at the public hearing, to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths. And council will pause at this time from taking any other action.
I gotta read that three times.
Thank you.
I'll now ask council members if they've had any site visits, expertise, communication, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left with Mr. Yurha.
I have not, Mayor.
Mrs. Bush?
I have not.
Mr. France?
No, sir.
I haven't. Mr. Smith?
I have not.
Mrs. Robinson?
I have not.
George, alright. Based on the evidence you've heard from the council members, at this time, I would invite any party to this matter if they have an objection to any council member's participation in the hearing. Seeing none, we'll continue and I'll open the quasi judicial hearing. Cassie Shoemaker Georgopoulos of our staff will introduce this hearing.
She's smiling.
Did I mispronounce?
He did it!
No, you didn't.
You got it right.
He got it right!
You did, I'm sorry. I'm very proud of you. Yay! Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. This evening, we bring a request from the Amberly Glen subdivision to convert 56 town home units to 56 detached residential units. Amberly Glen is located along Waycroft Avenue on the east side of Yates Store Road and is part of the Amberly planned development district. This item originally came before Town Council due to the total number of units exceeding 100 units. And it was determined that the change being proposed tonight is significant enough to bring back for your review. Town Council originally approved the development plan for Amberly Glen on September 8th, 2016. The development plan included a total of 283 units, 148 designated to be townhomes, and 135 to be detached residential units. To date, a total of 115 building permits have been issued. A little over a third of those have been for townhome units and the remaining two-thirds have been for detached residential units. What is being proposed for your consideration tonight is the 56 townhome units outlined here in red. So again, the request is to convert the 56 townhome units to 56 detached residential units. This proposed request will change the unit count from 148 townhomes to 94 and from 135 detached residential units to 189. The total number of units will remain the same at 283 units. So while the only proposed change to the plan is to convert the townhome units to detached residential units, Town Council's action tonight will apply to the full development plan. No other changes are being proposed to the original development plan. Lot lines will not change. The buffers will remain unchanged. The common area remains the same as was approved in the original development plan. And the density will remain the same at four units per acre. And also, the development plan will have to meet the requirements of the land development ordinance. This concludes staff's initial presentation. And following the applicant and other speakers, I'll return to summarize staff's observations.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Jason Baron with the Morning Star Law Group here on behalf of the applicant. Here with me tonight is Shane Leathers of Withers Ravenel. He's the engineer who's been providing the plans that are before you all tonight and will provide testimony as to a number of the findings required by the ordinance. Also here is Mr. Kevin Dean with Kimling Horn and Associates. They provided the original traffic engineering associated with the site and have updated that information. And that's included in your staff report as well. We're optimistic that at the conclusion of the receipt of testimony, you all will agree we've satisfied the evidentiary burden that an applicant has in a case such as this and that the approval should be granted. Cassie's done a great job of summarizing the nature of the request, but essentially, we had 56 townhomes in the middle of the site that they want to convert to single-family detached dwellings. Couple of points on that. One, since you might ask the question, why? And the reason why is that the market reception has been better for the single-family detached product than it has been for the townhomes. And so, they found that in this particular location, the detached is something that the market has had a better time with. So that's essentially the genesis for why they want to make the change. Open space was something that we talked a lot about on this case the last time it was approved. If you recall, the code required open space was 5,000. There was a condition at the time of approval that increased the community gathering space or community gathering area to 31,000 square feet. And what is provided in the plan is 42,688. So 42,688 square feet of community gathering area has been included in the plan. So it's roughly 11,000 square feet more than was required even with the condition that was associated with the prior plan approval. So with that, I'm going to get out of the way and hand it over to the experts to put on the testimony.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. A little bit about myself. I am Shane Leathers, project manager with Withers Ravenel. I'm a BS in civil engineering from Iowa State University. I know it's not NC State. Licensed professional engineer to the state of North Carolina. And I've been practicing engineering for over 20 years. My role with Amberly Glen Project is the project manager. I'm here to discuss the overall design of the project. And I personally oversaw the design of the subdivision plan. Compliance with the LDO. We've been working closely with town staff since about July to develop the plan you see before you. With their assistance, we have been able to ensure that the plan meets all the technical requirements of the LDO. The subdivision plan has been designed in compliance with the town's LDO where applicable and the Amberly PDD where it supersedes the town's LDO. Protections for other property. The section of the overall subdivision plan, which contains the 56 lots to be converted to single-family detached, is basically in the middle of the development. Sets for the eastern boundary. This section is surrounded by other properties in the same community. Because these houses will be built under the same set of covenants as the rest of the community, the potential adverse effects to the surrounding properties is greatly limited. Along the eastern edge, which backs up to Waycroft neighborhood, there is a 30-foot type B buffer and the potential for a town of Cary Greenway. Taken together, these measures work to protect nearby properties from potential adverse effects of the proposed development. Harmony and unity. The plan helps to achieve the vision sought for this area when the Amberly PDD was approved. The proposed project still will establish a residential community in the area that has been designated for residential since the inception of the Amberly PDD. Moreover, the project is surrounded by complementary residential uses. I want to note that the townhomes that the revised plan removes were different from any additional home type in the neighborhood. The single-family homes that this plan proposes will be similar to the current single-family homes that are along the south side of the Amberly Glen subdivision that's currently under construction. We're providing four community gathering spaces with a total area greater than the previous minimum of 31,000 square feet that Jason mentioned. Those are located in here. There's a gazebo area in here, tot lot, open space area here, and another patio gazebo thing here. Safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists. The plan includes a sidewalk network which allows pedestrians to navigate the community on foot safely as vehicles travel down the roads. The street sidewalk has been designed in a manner that will result in vehicle speeds that are conducive to a residential community. For example, the subdivision plan includes provisions for speed tables in various locations and to small traffic circles added to Waycroft Avenue. Additionally, the project includes street greenway connections, community open spaces, a gazebo, and other amenities. We tied to the overlooked greenway here. There's a town of Cary Greenway that we tied to through here. And then we tied to the Villa Square sidewalk and greenway system to the back. While you can drive to the amenities and park there, they are pedestrian oriented. In that way, the plan provides the necessary roads to move people around. But more than that, it also creates spaces which prioritize the pedestrian experience. Emergency services. The plan also has been designed with adequate radii to accommodate the emergency vehicles. So in conclusion, in my professional opinion, the proposed plan complies with all applicable requirements of the LDO, including chapters seven and eight. The plan adequately protects their other property for potential adverse effects. The plan is harmonious with the development of nearby properties. And the plan provides safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists and provides safe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site. If there are no questions this time, I would like to invite Kevin Dean, our traffic engineer, to speak fully about the last point. Oh, I'm still on the old one. Let's leave it on revise.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Dean. I'm a traffic engineer with Kimling Horn and Associates, 300 West Morgan Street in Durham. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from NC State. I've been doing traffic analysis for seven years and I'm a professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. Helped prepare the original analysis for this site and have reviewed the changes in terms of traffic. We reviewed the new plan based on the updated mix. As noted in your staff report, it does result in a slight but negligible increase in traffic volumes, given the change in mix. We also looked at the impacts of that increase on the surrounding road network. Found no significant increases in delay and no changes to intersection level of service. Based on that review, there aren't any additional improvements that should be required to accommodate site traffic. It is my professional opinion that the proposed plan before you tonight, which includes their originally committed traffic improvements, provides mitigation for traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project. I have to answer any questions you want to have.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, we'll conclude our presentation. And Chief, we'd ask that the council accept into record, as judicial notice, copies of the land development ordinance and the town's other adopted plans, as well as copies of the staff report and the exhibits attached there, too.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. This time, I'll invite speakers who have been sworn in who wish to speak in support of the application to approach the podium. Anyone to speak in support? Seeing no one will continue. Any reason to cross-examine? Nope. Alright, well now, open the hearing to those who are opposed to the request. As a reminder to those testifying, please limit your testimony to facts that you know. The applicant's representative has a right to object to your testimony. He or she may object while you're speaking. They have the right to do that. Our contractual attorney sitting beside me is to help council determine what evidence to consider. And I would invite you to the podium at this time. Anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing no one will continue. And we'll call on staff to provide professional observations about the requests.
Thank you. The conversion of 56 units from townhomes to detached residential is fitting with the original approval and matches the surrounding neighborhoods. Detached residential is considered a less intense development use than townhomes. Therefore, staff's perspective is development intensity will decrease. The proposed use remains residential. And as stated earlier, the lot lines, buffers, the density, and street layouts will not be altered by the proposed changes of use type. And the gathering areas remain the same size as the original approved plan. Traffic impacts will remain unchanged from the impacts identified in the original study. And no modifications have been requested. So council is simply reviewing the development plan against the six approval criteria, specifically focusing on how the proposed conversion of the 56 townhome units to detached residential units affects the original plan. And with that, staff would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now begin the deliberative phase of the hearing and I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments. Ms. Robinson?
I have questions. So it's a little confusing, looking at it, how you can take the same parcels and go from 56 townhomes to 56 single-family. So are the units smaller? Is that how they're accommodating, single-family detached?
So the lot sizes are similar to the lot sizes that were originally approved for single-family uses. So these were planning to be larger townhomes than what is being constructed today on the western side of the development.
Yeah, I understand that. But it just seems like if you're going from an attached product and you get 56 of them and you just have some savings because you don't have side yard setbacks, and then you go to single-family, it seems like there should be like 52 units or something like that instead of 56. I'm just confused how the numbers work out that they can still fit in the same number of single-family units.
Can I call on the engineer to...? Okay.
I kind of had the same question when it was brought to my attention. But the original townhomes were extraordinarily large. And it just works out that with the setbacks and the product type that they're fitting, they just fit perfectly with the original plan, so.
Okay, so they basically go smaller?
They are smaller home, in terms of footprint.
Okay, can someone explain to me this thing that is not a cul-de-sac? What is this? It looks like a rectangular turnaround. I mean, I deal with that all the time in Carpenter Village. It looks a little bit different from that, but you have to do a three-point turn to be able to turn around. Is that the intent here is that it's a vehicular turning space? Or is it a parking pad smack in the middle? The little light gray thing?
This here?
Yep. And then there's one to the left and then another one to the left. Yeah, there's three.
This is just a community area. This here is another parking area for the residents. And this one would be, as an example, similar. This actually has the mail kiosk attached to it. This one has the mail kiosk attached to it. Like this one here is just parking for, it's a tot lot, gazebo, swing set, kind of thing on that one. So this is, it's just parking. It's not a dead-end road or any...
Okay, when I look at this, going towards a single-family, it seems like you're going to be getting more families than you would with townhomes. Maybe not. But I can understand with townhomes how you have to have an extra parking pad. But here, I would much rather see that used for either green space or seal it off and make it a, you know, a blacktop playground for kids, put a basketball court in there or something and let it be a gathering space. I don't think that you need to have extra parking if these are going to be single-family homes. I presume if it's single-family, they're probably going to have a garage or a little driveway. They probably have capacity for two to four vehicles, you know, in it. So I'd be more amenable to moving to that product that's obviously going to attract, in my opinion, attract more families if you take that space and convert it over to some type of, you know, public amenity that's not parking.
Is that a mail kiosk? Look, I mean, because you do have cluster mailboxes here now in these units. Is that a cluster box or like you had in the other locations or no?
The one that we're particularly talking about, no, it's just parking.
Okay.
Is there enough room for vehicles to safely park on the street and traffic to still come through?
The road still follows the standard width and the horizontal criteria. Parking is allowed in the streets in single families.
Okay.
And these are public, these are public streets. Does the driveway cuts allow for enough space for a car to park between driveways?
It should be able to fit in between each one. I haven't actually measured them, but...
Okay. That's just my impression. You know, I don't know that we need an extra parking pad. And I think it could be a really phenomenal amenity for the community, especially when you have so many homes with such small yards. It'd be really nice to have a space. And a lot of kids play in cul-de-sacs. And we always say, hey, cul-de-sacs aren't really for playing in, but they do anyway because they like to ride their bikes and whatnot. So I mean, having it closed off as a blacktop playground or as a green space, I think would have a lot of appeal to the community.
From a process perspective, I can't remember. When we have a quasi judicial discussion and a site plan comes to us with respect to a change, is everything on the table such as this? Is it only, are we only to discuss what's brought before us? I mean, how does that work? Because I know we had a discussion about this, but I can't remember the answer.
Right, so you're actually looking at this as if it were a new plan. Now, you have seen it before and so I want you to remember that and that you did approve it before. But you're looking at all six criteria and evaluating whether this plan as a whole meets the six criteria for review.
Okay.
Did the previous plan that was approved have this little parking area?
It did. And the parking is in place today. And staff did have discussion about whether or not it was appropriate to look at converting it to green space or is the parking lot appropriate because of the density of the uses and what might be limited to on-street parking? So I think that there's a balance at play to what is a needed amenity for the community there.
Was there a staff observation? Because I know that they're providing more parking than is required, as detailed in the staff report already. Was there a staff observation with request to, with respect to whether that's needed for this area where the homes are smaller and the lots are smaller?
So our observation was that they are providing an excess of parking at this time. And weighing between whether it were to be converted back to green space or maybe leaning more towards having that extra parking for the residents might be a more useful, excuse me, ideal, I don't know, I can't find the right word, an amenity for the neighborhood.
Okay, so parking, so basically, it's not a bad idea?
I don't think so.
I mean, I appreciate the concern. I can see the pros and cons to having a little extra parking in the neighborhood if it gets a couple few cars off the street. You know, some neighborhoods, while, you know, if you especially have cars parked on both sides, you know, you're lucky to get one car through at a time. But I also see that some extra green space might be beneficial to the community as well. But I don't know that it makes me not support the project. I mean, I'm kind of going to leave it up to them to determine what they think best fits their product. I'm just, you know, to go from townhomes to single-family homes, I'm pleased with that. You know, initially, when I read the staff report, I kind of felt like this was one of those meetings we could have just had via email and called it good, you know? But I do appreciate your attention to detail and concern over that.
Any other comments? If not, if we're ready for a motion, I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask council for a motion on the proposed development plan.
Oh, let's see, do we need to read the motion? I'll throw out a motion and see if you guys like it. And if not, we'll move on and we'll do a different one. "For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the proposed development plan with conditions as stated below, as it meets all of the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.9.2I, one, of the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following. The applicant must satisfactorily address all remaining Development Review Committee comments on the master plan submitted for signature. Number two, all previous conditions of approval remain. And number three, that the parking area in the center of these 56 homes, single-family homes, be converted to a public amenity play space."
I'll second it for discussion.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
More of a question, I guess, to the applicant. Do you have any heartburn issue with turning the parking into play space or a paved play area or something besides parking?
It's in, the parking's in, as of today.
It's already constructed.
It's already been constructed.
Built. Oh, okay.
Their preference is to keep it without having to rip it up.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, I guess...
For an amenity. Would you like to withdraw that motion?
I guess so. I mean, I wish we could just rip up a small part of it at the curb. Break it so a car can't come in it and just leave it curbed all around and let kids play in that space. But if that, I mean, you know, I always think about where are the kids going to play? You know, and...
Can I ask...
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then can I ask a question? So are we saying that, as shown, now it has to be parking only?
They already did.
No, no, but it has, it's already asphalt.
It's already there.
It's asphalt, that doesn't mean it has to be parking, like Jennifer just said.
Unless you want to put the condition on it and have them...
Block it off.
Block it off and invest additional resources.
Yeah, but it was not designed to be play base on the front end. So it's not going to...
That's fine, I rescind my motion.
So...
We see kids playing in the parking lot.
So we had a rescinding of motion from Ms. Robinson and Mr. France. I would entertain another motion.
"For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the proposed development plan with conditions as stated below, as it meets all the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.9.2I of the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following. The applicant must satisfactorily address all remaining Development Review Committee comments on the master plan submitted for signature and that all previous conditions of the approval remain."
Second, there's a motion and a second discussion.
I just want to say that, and this is more of an overall comment, I don't want to see us doing this anymore for single-family homes, like having this kind of parking area. Because I think what invariably happens is you get somebody who has an extra car and he parks it there and then it sits there forever. He puts a little cloth over it and then, you know, it just kind of attracts a nuisance thing. I mean, kids come and park there. I mean, it just really doesn't seem like it's the right thing for a single-family community. And I don't want us to get in the habit of doing this, so... So I think in, you know, to, to the west here where you have these really dense townhomes, it makes sense because you, you know, you have such density that, you know, where is anybody gonna even park in that? I mean, I can't believe how tight those little units are. But, um, in the future, I mean, if we think that there's ever a chance that something's gonna convert over to a single-family, I don't wanna see this kind of parking lot in here.
Yeah, and, and just to reinforce what she's saying, if you go where we live over by, um, that controversial apartment complex on Tryon and Cary Parkway. Um, they can have all the covenants in the world. People just don't follow them. You've got boats stored there, you've got trailers stored there, and you're at the mercy of the homeowners enforcing their own policies. And, um, they do, but you always worry about that day they, they don't, and then we just have another collection here.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried of here.
That's kinda the thought you gotta keep in mind.
So I just think it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just, I think it's kind of a mistake. I mean, I, I regret that they've already paved it because I think it's gonna be such a nuisance that.
Just to jackpoint though, I mean, that controversial apartment complex, it's nice to have sometimes when the parking lot at Cary Orthopedic cross the streets full, so.
Yeah, well, people going to Orthopedic aren't driving their boats there. I mean, you're, you're right. I, I think it's great to have, I'm not arguing the parking, I'm arguing the, the uses there.
So we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose?
No.
Motion carries six to one. And if everything's in order, Ms. Silverstein, I'll close this public hearing. All right, I'll close the public hearing and we'll move to our second evidentiary hearing. It's the Bojangles Sketch Plan 17DP 0893. This case is before us this evening because the applicant has requested to build a 4,696-square-foot drive-through restaurant. As a reminder to those in attendance, even though we are in the council chambers, an evidentiary hearing is more like a court case. Counsel acts like the judge and can only accept evidence that is competent, material, and substantial. And North Carolina and the United States constitutions give the applicant certain due process rights in an evidentiary hearing that counsel must comply with. Constitution really ties our hands on what evidence we can accept. I apologize in advance for what might seem a burdensome or complex process. We will consider competent, material, and substantial evidence from anyone who testifies. By law, we can only accept testimony from expert witnesses regarding whether a development affects property values, whether increased traffic resulting from the development will pose a danger to public safety. To those who are with us this evening intending to testify that are not qualified as experts, we can only accept testimony from you on factual and what you have observed. Contractual attorneys to my left, Mr. Silverstein, will help us determine who's an expert and what evidence we can consider. The hearing procedures, detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who wish to speak during the public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. We'll pause at this time to allow those individuals who would like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths. This time I'll ask if council members had any site visits, exportate communication, financial relationships, specialized knowledge to close relationship to an affected person to disclose. Starting on my right with Mr. George.
I have not.
Ms. Robinson.
I have not.
Mr. Smith, I have not. Mr. France.
I eat at Bojangles, but.
Yeah.
Ms. Bush.
I have not.
I have not.
Mr. Urha, all right, very good. Based on the disclosures you've heard from council members, I invite, I would invite anybody at this time, if they have an objection to a council member's participation in the hearing, to approach the podium. Seeing no one, we'll continue and I'll open the quasi-judicial hearing. Mr. Kevin Hales of our staff will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. The next item on tonight's agenda is a request for a sketch-only plan approval for a drive-through restaurant on NC 55. I emphasize that because it is a or fine-grained details. Uh, this is before you this evening because it is a drive-through facility and therefore requires council QJ approval. Subject site this evening is located on NC 55 between Morrisville Parkway and Morrisville Carpenter Roads. The Carpenter Historic District is located just to the east outlined on this slide in blue. It is separated from the Carpenter Historic District by a 100-foot Durham and Southern Railroad corridor, which is owned by CSX. It's located about 1,000 feet north of the public storage that was recently constructed this year. There are several nearby development projects underway in the vicinity. Uh, the NC 55 Eagles gas station is immediately north and is close to administrative approval, immediately to the north. West Cary Professional Park is two lots to the south, which is a 25,000-square-foot office building, which has already been approved earlier this year. Across NC 55, you have the Blakely and Wakina Hills subdivisions, which are both currently under construction. Carpenter's Point, the subdivision, was rezoned earlier this year and has just started the development review process itself. Indian Wells rezoning was recently approved by council in October. And then the Morrisville Parkway and NC 55 assumage has just started its rezoning process to the southwest. The site itself is currently sparsely wooded with mostly small pines and some hardwoods. Uh, the development of this property will occur on a lot in the Futrell-Cook commercial subdivision, which has not currently begun construction as it's still wooded. And to put that a little bit better context, Futrell-Cook was a three and a quarter acre subdivision approved administratively in January of this year. Consisted of four commercial lots. This project occupies the second from the north, identified as Lot Five. Utilities and access for this property are provided by this underlying subdivision. Access to the lots are provided by a new access road, which will run parallel to the Durham Southern Railroad corridor. Principal access to the site is via a leftover access on NC 55 between Lots Six and Seven to the south of the subject property. The access road will also connect northwards to Morrisville Carpenter Road. Ultimately, this access will be restricted to a right-in, left-out once the Atgrade Railroad crossing of Morrisville Carpenter is closed at the end of the Carpenter Fire Station realignment project. And then there's another right-in-only access on NC 55 provided on Lot Four, the NC 55 Eagles project, just north of the site. The site itself consists of a 4,700-square-foot drive-through restaurant, oriented in the middle of the site. Uh, the drive-through itself window is oriented toward the railroad corridor, so will minimize visual impacts along 55. Sidewalks along NC 55 and the access drive are provided, as shown in the original Futrell-Cook subdivision plans. There is an averaged 30-foot-wide buffer along the railroad per the zoning conditions. The zoning conditions were written to allow the averaging administratively. And a retaining wall and evergreen plant material supplementing that railroad corridor buffer will preclude unsanctioned crossing of the railroad corridor. The plan does include two modifications, which were approved administratively during the review process. The first, a 30-foot streetscape along NC 55 is averaged in width. Uh, the minimum width would be 23 feet and the maximum width would be 41 feet. And this is due to irregularities in the right-of-way along the property's frontage. The second modification is an increase to the maximum parking allowed on the site from 39 spaces to 46 spaces, which is approximately 18%. And this is due to anticipated parking demands for the use and is in line and consistent with other projects, um, with their modifications approved in similarly situations. This concludes staff's presentation. We'll be back following all the other speakers to provide some brief observations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. At this time, I'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Neil Gosh. I'm with the Morningstar Law Group. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Triarc Food Systems, to present evidence and support sketch plan approval for a, uh, restaurant with a drive-through facility that is about 4,700 square feet. In case you haven't heard, it is a Bojangles. Uh, our burden is to show that each of the approval criteria has been met, and we will do that tonight through the exhibits and testimony of our expert witnesses for traffic matters. I have Mr. Reynold Stevenson of Ramey Kemp and Associates. Uh, but first you will hear from Mr. Ron Hendricks of Piedmont Land Design, who has been the site planner for the project. I am proffering both these gentlemen as expert witnesses in their fields. Mr. Hendricks?
Good evening. My name's Ron Hendricks. I'm with Piedmont Land Design. I'm a principal in that firm. I've been a licensed PE since 1994, and I did receive my degree from State in 1989. Um, for this project, I'm both a project manager and a civil engineer. And we've been working with staff for a long time to get to this point. We're glad to be here. First approval criteria, criteria regards compliance with the LDO. As Kevin mentioned, we did request the two alternates that are approved by staff, and there are none that need approval from council. The first one was the parking increase. The second one was the street yard average. You know, with this approval, you know, we believe the site's been designed in accordance with the LDO. The second approval criteria is protections for other property. Uh, as you saw, it fronts on Highway 55. It backs up to the rail corridor. It has commercial property both to the north and the south. Um, you know, this area is not residential in nature. But we are, it's required providing the 30-foot or the average 30-foot buffer on 55. Kevin mentioned that the property to the north is gonna be a convenience store with gas sales. And there is a buffer required there, but in lieu of providing it there, we're shifting it to the south to provide more of a buffer to the office that will occur to the south prob, of likely office use. And that's been approved by staff as well. Ultimately, we believe development of this parcel will not have a negative impact on nearby properties as the most dominating characteristic is the railroad, and we've got a great barrier to the residential. The next criteria is harmony and unity. Um, as I mentioned, this development plan in conjunction with that of the adjacent convenience store provides harmony and unity development as required by the rezoning and the conditions that we're required to adhere to. Kevin mentioned that, you know, this side is already developing commercially. We've got the public service storage facility. Then we've got the medical office or the office that's been approved. And non-residential uses are reasonable in this area, given the adjacent railroad and the frontage on the high-volume thoroughfare. As the rest of this area develops, it will do so in a manner that is harmonious with the pattern of development we are continuing. The fourth criteria is safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists. Um, you know, with any fast food, you know, pedestrians do have to cross the driveways. So we've, you know, provided crosswalks and provided sidewalks and striping that they can get there safely. You know, it's not uncommon. All fast food restaurants have that. And as Kevin mentioned, the cross-access driveways provided behind the property to provide adequate access to the facility. And the internal drives provide access around the building. Emergency services. Uh, this project's been designed with adequate width and radio on the drives to facilitate movements of emergency vehicles around the site. And the overall parcel can be accessed, as I stated, from Highway 55 and Morrisville Carpenter Road. In conclusion, it's my professional opinion that proposed plan complies with all applicable requirements of the LDO, including chapter seven and eight. The plan adequately protects other property from potential adverse effects and is harmonious with the development of nearby properties. I also find that the plan provides safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists and provides safe ingress and egress for emergency services. And I'm, if there are no questions, I'd like to invite Reynold Stevenson to address the traffic issues.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Reynold Stevenson. I'm with Ramey Kemp and Associates, 5808 Farringdon Place in Raleigh. Um, I am a registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. I have a bachelor's of science and master's of civil engineering degree from, um, NC State. And I've got about 20 years, uh, experience in the field of, uh, transportation engineering. So we, so there, for this particular property, there have been, um, numerous traffic impact studies done, um, on, on the, the overall development that includes this parcel as well as other, uh, developments that you saw, my staff showed you earlier. So there's been a lot of traffic analysis done out in this area. Uh, so we, we kinda came in after this process got started. The original traffic study that was done for this, uh, overall development was, uh, from 2009. And so when working with staff, we, um, were asked to update the traffic study in terms of the traffic counts to get a current assessment of what's going on out there and how this would, how this may impact things. And so that's what we did. We took traffic counts that were done from March of this year and added in the other developments you saw, uh, on the screen earlier, as well as the proposed, uh, Bojangles, and looked at how the traffic would work, um, at the surrounding intersections. And what we found, when you look at the Bojangles itself, it had a very minimal increase in, in, in delay uh, at these intersections on the order of magnitude of one or two seconds. So it was, it was a relatively very minimal increase. So, as I said, the traffic study included the adjacent developments that you saw earlier, as well as 2%, uh, traffic growth, uh, from the counts that were taken. So with, with the improvements and the access that you, that you've seen, uh, on the plan, um, there, and the impacts this development would not create the need for any additional, uh, transportation improvements, uh, to accommodate the traffic, uh, upon buildout of the parcel. And I'll be, I'll be glad to answer, uh, any questions that you have.
Thank you. Just for the record, this is Neil Gosh, again, speaking on behalf of the applicant. I'd like to, at this time, move into evidence, all the exhibits relied upon or referred to by the witnesses, including the staff report, site plan, application materials, and all the exhibits, and ask that judicial notice be taken with regard to the contents of the LDO, the Cary Community Plan and other adopted plans of the town. Um, as I mentioned at the beginning of the hearing, our burden is to submit competent material, substantial evidence into the record showing that the proposal meets all of the requirements, uh, of the LDO for approval, and we have done that tonight. Therefore, I respectfully ask this council to approve this sketch plan, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gosh. This time, all invited speakers have been sworn in. Who'd like to speak in support of the application to approach the podium? Anyone to speak in support? Seeing no one, I'll ask, um, if there is any reason for cross-examination? Nope. We'll now open the, the hearing to those who are opposed to this request, and I'll invite you to approach the podium. Anyone opposed? Seeing no one, we'll continue. And I'll ask for Mr. Hales to give a profession, professional observation about the request.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, again. And again, most of the observations in the staff report, we did wanna highlight very briefly because this is located very close to the, and right across the railroad tracks from the Carpenter Historic District, and that was a major consideration during the time of the rezoning, uh, in the 90s and the development plan review, even though it is a sketch plan review. The 100-foot corridor does provide good spatial separation. In addition to that, the zoning conditions on the property do include a lot of architectural conditions, and we're not talking about architecture tonight because there are no elevations. But it does control, there's a palette of acceptable roof designs and a palette of acceptable masonry materials to be used, as well as limiting the colors of any metal roofs or asphalt roofs to an earth-toned color, brown, tan palette. Uh, so that will ensure some compatibility with the existing structures in the Historic District. In addition, there are requirements for some additional evergreen screening in the buffer along Durham Southern Railroad, uh, which will be complied with, with the full development plan. And that concludes staff's observations this time. We'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. Unless there's any reason to continue this hearing, I'll proceed. All right. We now begin the deliberative phase of the hearing. I'll open it up to council members for questions or comments.
Could you explain if somebody's coming south on Highway 55, gets a Bojangles fix? How do they get in? How do they get out to continue back south again? I'm not sure I get that one.
I, I'll get my awesome access slide. So you'll notice there's a leftover access. So you'll notice there's a leftover access between lots six and seven. So as you're coming down, there'll be a median break to allow left turns into the, that access. So that was part of the original Futrell Cook subdivision approved back in January. So there's a leftover to allow southbound traffic to enter the subdivision. And then to get back out, they would either have to go northbound, or they would go all the way up to Morrisville-Carpenter.
But they can't make a left?
You can't make a left. It's a leftover.
No, okay, so a leftover to get into lot six, basically?
So coming over, you make a leftover. You cannot go this direction.
Right out.
It's a right out only.
Okay. And then to get back on Highway fifty-five south after you're done with Bojangles?
You would go up to Morrisville-Carpenter and access at the light and make a left-hand turn.
And I thought that was median divided at Morrisville-Carpenter with the new crossover, with the new flyover?
It's designed ultimately to be a right-in and then a left-out, because there will be no traffic coming from the right-hand side, so you'd be able to take a left to get out and go to the light.
It's closed at the railroad track?
Yeah. Ultimately, with the realignment of Carpenter Fire Station, it gets closed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's right. Got it?
Other questions?
You said the, the, the metal roofing materials can be earth-toned?
It allows metal roofing materials and are limited to an earth-toned palette of browns, grays, and tans.
So no orange?
No orange metal roofs. They can use orange. It cannot be the, any of the masonry, and it cannot be metal roofing.
Okay, so it won't match the many storage?
All oranges are different.
I don't expect.
Five are, yeah, they all clash. All the oranges are different.
Not one orange.
It's so ugly. I would put this in like the, just incredibly disappointing uses for this. So then you look at the sketch plan, and you say, okay, you know, can the sketch plan overcome the fact that you have the most disappointing use next to a historic area? And I don't see anything that's been done here in the sketch plan that really overcomes it. I mean, I would expect to see massive planting so that it's very screened. We don't know what will happen with that rail corridor if CSX one day will say, you know what? Let's clear everything out of our corridor, which they have total right to do. So you said that there's going to be some supplemental plantings. To what level? Type A, type B?
We, we don't have a planting plan yet because it's a sketch plan. However, they are required to have a type-B buffer with additional evergreen trees planted along there to provide a visual separation. That's part of the zoning.
What is the LDO requirement for that area? C, type?
It's a type-B usually along a railroad corridor.
Type-B?
Yeah.
I thought it was C, too.
Other questions?
I just want to make sure.
I just want to make sure to see if it's type-C. You know, I don't think that the site, the, excuse me, the sketch plan brings this product into harmony or unity with the historic product. I don't, I don't, I think this, there is a negative impact from this. I mean, I would never, ever, ever select a Bojangles to go near our historic area.
Well, there's a gas station right above it.
I, crap. I know. Total crap.
Gas station is worse.
It's wor, I mean, they're both crap. So given that they're so crappy, it seems like the applicant needs to kind of step up the game with the sketch plan and make it more acceptable. So it's just, I don't see it here.
I just want to make sure that gas station's already been administratively approved, right?
Yeah, we're not talking about the gas station.
So, yeah.
I just, right. I think these both comply with whatever crazy zoning.
Because it's highway zoning?
It just has a drive-through as a reason.
It's general commercial conditional use, and there were some uses that were limited, but they're automotive repair and automotive sales uses. The only other conditions were a split between office and retail. So you have commercial closer to the intersection, office to the south, and then the architectural conditions I covered earlier.
I think we've asked this before. I'm just going to ask it again going forward. Anytime we have a rezoning, could you give us an exhaustive list? When they say, oh, it won't be automotive, can you give us an exhaustive list of everything imaginable that it could be so that we could go through that list and go, whoo, fast food next to the historic area, gas station, no, we don't want that? Because sometimes we don't think about what can be there. We're focusing on what they've said they won't be there.
Sure.
Because I think none of us would have ever selected like, yeah, let's allow a gas station and a Bojangles. But I do think it's incumbent upon the applicant, if he's going to put a Bojangles in there, that he goes to extra measures to screen it and to make it compatible, you know, with the historic area around here. And so, and we want to make sure that we don't end up, you know, looking terrible on fifty-five either, you know?
Kind of already there.
Well, yeah.
It's the Capitol Boulevard of Cary.
It is becoming the Capitol Boulevard.
There's four.
Sure is.
Storage units.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we can make it the best we can, but already it's got, there's, there's a gas station, there's two storage units, there's, you know?
There's three, three.
What else? Just, I mean, where, that you can see from that site.
Oh, from that site, they can see.
Right? I mean, question is, how can we make it the best Bojangles or something that fits that, you know, what it's already allowed to be, right? What it's already zoned for.
Sounds like some of our concerns are more with the approval of the Futrell Cook subdivision back in January that would allow this rather than the subject that we're talking about.
And to be clear, it's actually the zoning. It was approved back in, you know, early two thousands, late nineties.
So, I mean, to me, Bojangles would not be my first choice next to the Historic District, but I, I believe it's better than a lot of other uses that, that could be there, especially with the architectural requirements that are involved. My concern was with the, with the buffer. I thought I remembered the staff report talking about type-C.
So the LDO requires a type-C with the addition of the plant, the evergreen plant material. It serves as a B. It's actually a higher than a type-C, because a type-C buffer has no evergreen plant material in it. So it's an effective B.
I see.
Okay.
Okay, that helps a great deal. That was, that's my concern. I, I mean, I would like to say we don't want a Bojangles there, but I just don't see us able to say that based on the criteria that.
Say no drive-through?
Tonight. We, right, the drive-through is the main reason why it's coming.
The reason it's here.
Right, we wouldn't even see it if it wasn't a drive-through. If it was a restaurant, it would never come to us.
Correct.
Could be any restaurant known out there if it didn't have a drive-through today, and there wouldn't even be here.
So if you don't think it's appropriate to have a drive-through, we can say no to this?
You would have to tie it to one of the approval criteria that are in the ordinance. It couldn't be just because of drive-through. You'd have to tie that, the existence of a drive-through not compatible with the.
It says it's in harmony with the historic area. I don't know any drive-throughs in the historic, you know?
It's pretty unfair to say this is not in harmony when a gas station's.
It's right next to a gas station.
Directly to the north and storage units and stuff. I don't see how you penalize a Bojangles in that regard. To me, I, I see the only reason this is here is because it's a drive-through use, and so everything else, I'm, while it might be easier for some than others, I'm just kind of putting that aside and focusing isn't a drive-through use an appropriate use here along a major corridor such as Highway fifty-five that's getting people to and from work and home? And to me, the answer for that is yes. So I can appreciate the concerns. I can appreciate the, the, the points that have been brought up. But at the end of the day, I just don't see it, or I see it as an inappropriate use. Well, I, I don't, I don't see this crap, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I do. I don't like it.
I, I don't see it as, as an appropriate use. However, the damage is done. We have the gas station, and the domino has fell, you know, it's fallen, and now we have this coming, and you got two more spots. You know, if they change from O and I to something else, you know, I hope we get a hard look at that, because I think both of those are supposed to be commercial. But, you know, we, if there was a lesson that, that I learned in Franklin, Tennessee, when we did our inner city, is how they have this, they have this beautiful historic area, and they allowed it to be overrun by the fast foods and the pizza huts and everything else. And now they've realized how much damage it has done to the community, and they're actually buying those commercial entities and tearing them down and, and preserving the area around the historical center. Now, I don't want to compare their historical center to ours, but I think we really need to start looking long and hard about those surrounding strips, like, like you're saying. And, and, you know, maybe it's just a whole in our, our guidelines and, and imagine Cary. But I, when this was all created, our hope, or my hope, was that whole strip parallel to fifty-five would not end up like this, like you said, the Capitol Boulevard. So, so I'm torn, Don, because you are right. It's, there's an appropriate use, as you've said, but it's only appropriate because we've let the domino fall. I mean, I really don't, I really don't like this here, but I'm, I'm still more in shock at the gas station at the end.
I want to understand really quickly that, the, just the history of this Futrell. When was it approved?
Was that the three-to-two vote we had?
Futrell Cook was an administratively-approved commercial subdivision. So it was just a subdivision of the property in the four lots.
But the rezoning was?
The rezoning was, like I said, back in the early two thousands.
Oh, twenty years ago. Okay.
Oh, that's not what I'm thinking of.
But you could, two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine.
Two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten.
So not, eight, eight years ago, almost a decade ago. But you can see the zoning, this is the existing zoning of the corridor. A lot of this is, is zoning that is about there for years.
Okay.
And it's surrounded by ORD. Even in the Historic District, a lot of that zoning doesn't line up with the current vision.
And the Historic District was created after two thousand and nine? Or was it already there when it was approved?
The Historic District was there.
Okay. Just trying to understand when things.
Correct.
Felt like, okay. I mean, so my, I have to say, I've been disappointed about the way Highway fifty-five's been developing the whole time. I mean, this council, you know, already decided to put multiple storage units along fifty-five. So it's already become commercial, you know? I didn't support it, but that's the way it's happened. Whether or not this gas station goes or not, I think it's a done deal because it's already been approved. If you're going to put a drive-through anyway, you're going to put it on a four-lane, fifty-five-moving, right, place where people are going to and from work. If you're going to pick anywhere to put it, this is where it's going to go. The problem I think we all have is that it's also an historic district on that lane. So it's already, the damage has already been done from my perspective. You might as well make it the best Bojangles it can be in a historic district, because if you're going to pick up Bojangles to be anywhere, that would be where you would put it, right next to a gas station.
And just to clarify, the Historic District is on the opposite side of the railroad track, so this is not in the Historic District.
Understand.
It's in the view shed, though.
Yeah, I, I understand. I just wanted to clarify for the record.
You can see it from there.
Yeah.
You see it from your house.
That's why I'm saying the sketch plan should not have a type-B buffer or a type-C. It should have a type-A buffer. It should, it should be providing for us every assurance that we can that this is going to be the best Bojangles possible, and I don't see the effort made here.
Can I ask about the elevation? Is, are we aware of the elevation of the, where the track is there above, above this site plan about the parking lot? Did you have that information?
So the building, the parking lot sits about five foot above, if I recall correctly. Ron's going to look up the actual number, but it, the parking lot sits above Highway fifty-five and below the railroad track. And it's not a significant elevation difference. About five feet, right?
The road's approximately at three-eighty, the building's at three-eighty-five, and railroad's at three-hundred.
Yeah.
Five feet each side. It's halfway between. So we won't get, we won't get headlights with zero buffer if CSX clears all they will. We won't get headlights, you have to have headlights higher than five feet up off the ground to shine into this Historic District. There won't be light bleeding over this because of the height of the railroad track.
Yeah, so the grading is going to do some of it. And remember, you're going to have a semi-opaque buffer along there that's twenty-five to thirty-three feet wide. So that, I mean, CSX can't clear our buffer, they can only clear their right-of-way.
I get you.
So you're always going to have that thirty-foot average buffer against the right-of-way and the, or between the right-of-way and the internal drive aisle.
And then you've got five feet in effect, so permanent fence.
Correct, you have a grade difference.
Got you. Okay.
Other questions or comments before we move to the motion phase?
I do want to note, you've hit a great point, Jennifer. How, how does the applicant feel about increasing the buffer?
Unable to do that. So you can see the access road coming in on this side? That's, so the, oh, the, oh, increasing the planting standard or width?
But standard, going, make it opaque.
Four plants.
It's a C that's going to function as a B.
It's a C, it's kind of a B. How about an A?
Any other questions while they're researching?
Yeah, any other question?
I just have, I have a general question about this experience. I think Lisa can best answer it. Lisa, we always talk about that they have to submit, everybody has to submit facts. So when Neil concludes his remarks and says, and we have proven that we satisfy all the criteria, that's not a fact, that's his opinion.
He's been termed as an expert, and experts are permitted to make opinions.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so the applicant is amenable to increasing the planting standard, but the width cannot be increased.
Right.
But planting standard, sure.
Okay.
That makes me feel that.
Ready to move to the motion phase? I'm thinking yes, since I'm not hearing anything. So we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing, and I ask council for a motion.
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the proposed development plan with conditions as stated below, as it meets all of the approval criteria set forth in section three-point-nine-point-two I of the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following: that the applicant must satisfactorily address all remaining development review committee comments on the master plan set for, submitted for signature, and that the eastern buffer between the site and the Historic District be of type A.
No second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Does oppose?
Go.
Motion carries six to one. Mr. Silverstein, if everything's in order, I'll close the public hearing.
It is, ma'am.
All right, we'll close this public hearing. And we'll move to our next case, our third evidentiary hearing. Sam's Express Car Wash, eighteen DP zero-six-five-five. This case is before us tonight because the applicant has requested to build a four-point-one-two-zero square-foot drive-through car wash and twelve fueling station. As a reminder to those in attendance, even though we're not in the coun, even though we are in the council chamber, even though we are. An evidentiary hearing is more like a court case. Counsel acts like the judge and can only accept evidence that is competent material and substantial. The North Carolina and United States constitutions give the applicant certain due process rights in an evidentiary hearing that counsel must comply with. The Constitution really ties our hands in what evidence we can accept.
Thank you, Ron.
I apologize in advance for what may seem like a burdensome and complex process. We will consider competent material and substantial evidence from anyone who testified. By law, we can only accept testimony from expert witnesses regarding whether the development will affect property values and whether any increase in traffic resulting from the development will pose a danger to public safety. To those who are with us this evening intending to testify that are not qualified as experts, we can only accept testimony from you on factual issues and what you have observed. Our contractual attorney, who's sitting to my left, will help us determine who's an expert and what evidence we can consider. Hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during the public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who's to my right, who will posit this time to allow those individuals who'd like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their
I, I still think it ought to be like in the airlines. It should just be recorded.
That's what we were talking about.
I agree.
What's that?
The guy who's the speed talker.
Yeah.
You know, just get the speed talker.
At this time, I'll ask if any council members had any site visits, expertise, communication, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting with Mr. Yerha.
I did receive two emails in the last couple of days, but I did not open them or read them.
Ms. Bush?
Same thing. They were titled QDA, so I didn't open them.
Mr. France?
Same.
I actually opened them so I could respond that we cannot read these. And so I responded to both, both of them saying, we cannot read these, and I did not read them. Mr. Smith?
Glad I read yours first, so I got the same two and ignored them.
Okay. Ms. Robinson?
I responded no, and, but I, I have had a slight visit.
Okay. So based on what you have heard from council members?
Excuse me?
Yes.
On one of them, I sent a form reply that said it was a quasi-judicial and I cannot address it.
Okay.
Which I did.
I just wanted to be...
Which I did.
I forgot about that.
But did you read it?
I just... When I noticed that it was on the agenda tonight, I did not read it. I replied the comment.
Okay. Based on the disclosures you've heard from council members, I would invite anyone, any party, to this matter if they have an objection to any council member's participation in the hearing.
We do not.
Okay, very good. So I'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing, and once again, recognize Mr. Hales of our staff who will introduce the hearing.
Thank you again. And the final item on tonight's agenda is a request for development of a drive-through car wash and fueling stations located southern part of Cary on two out parcels of the Swift Creek Shopping Center. And this is a drive-through facility and therefore requires Town Council QJ approval. Swift Creek Shopping Center is located at the confluence of Jones Franklin, Campbell, and Tryon roads. Please note that the subject properties have no frontage on Tryon or Jones Franklin roads, and therefore there are no road improvements required with this project. The two out parcels are located at the north end of the existing Swift Creek Shopping Center and total almost 2 and 1/4 acres in size. Brakes Plus is immediately adjacent to the west. There's a vacant commercial building in disrepair across Franklin Springs Lane to the north, which we'll talk about a little bit more in detail. And then former Campbell Road Nursery Retail Center, which is being redeveloped across Campbell Road to the east. So I mentioned a couple of these already, but going through nearby development projects, there is the B-Safe self-storage, which is currently under administrative review to the east, replacing the former Campbell Road Nursery Retail Center. Across Tryon Road, there is the Sheets Filling Station, currently under review for replacing the former Rite Aid site. And then Walnut Street Retail, located at the intersection of Walnut Street and Tryon Road farther to the northwest. Counsel may also recall a development plan several years ago for an auto repair facility to replace the disrepaired rundown building located immediately north. It was called Mom's Auto Care and was approved in September of 2015. However, that plan subsequently expired with no development activity being done on the project. So the western parcel under consideration this evening is the unused alligator, mini golf, and snowball stand. The eastern parcel is vacant except for what appeared to be seating and play equipment to support the adjacent use. There is very little tree canopy on the site. The only existing significant tree canopy are the street trees along the perimeter of the out parcel. Those existing streetscapes do not meet current requirements. The current access is from the shopping center travel aisle. There is no access onto Campbell Road or Jones Franklin directly. So a development plan proposed before you this evening tonight is for a 4,100-square-foot car wash building, which is located adjacent to Campbell Road, shown here in the orangish-brown color. It has a corner entry tower element that addresses the intersection of Franklin Springs and Campbell Road toward the north end. And the drive-through entrance and queuing is along the south side of the building. To the west of that are 21 vacuum parking spaces, some under a canopy and some open. And then farther west from that is 12 fueling stations located under a canopy. Stormwater control measures located underground underneath the drive-through queuing lanes. Additional access is being expanded to the site to provide access directly to Franklin Springs Lane. This results in better trip distribution, which helped to mitigate some of the traffic impacts from the site. As with the last case, this plan did include two modifications to the development ordinance approved administratively. The first is to increase the maximum parking from 22 to 28 spaces. This is really based on the usage of the space as vacuum spaces. People tend to occupy those more for a longer period of time as they clean out their vehicles. The second modification is to reduce the corner clearance, which is the separation between the newly proposed driveway and Jones Franklin Road intersection from 200-foot to 100-foot. And that approval was based on a synchroanalysis, which demonstrated that the queuing coming into the site from Jones Franklin Road would not back up and interfere with function of Jones Franklin Road. That concludes staff's presentation. It will be available, following all the other speakers, to provide some observations.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. At this time, I'll invite the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Gray Stires. My address is 434 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina 27601. It is my privilege tonight to represent the applicant, Sam's Express Car Wash. I've identified a number of exhibits that I'd like to hand to the clerk. I'll tell you what they are right now. And then they will be referenced during the expert... my testimony and the expert testimony that will follow. And then I'll ask that they be moved into evidence following their authentication during the testimony. The first exhibits are gonna be six photographs I'm gonna show you in just a moment of the surrounding area, the streetscape. I've heard... You've heard me say I like pictures. I think they're worth more than 1,000 words. The second exhibit is labeled as the set... is actually the site plan set that has been submitted to the planning department staff. The third exhibit is a real estate appraisal report by Kirkland Appraisals, Rich Kirkland. He'll be discussing this report in his testimony. And the fourth is a traffic impact assessment by Mr. Travis Fluid and the affidavit authenticating that report. So I'll hand those to the clerk so that it could be identified and later bid into evidence. As Mr. Hales was discussing earlier, here's a view of the site, of the snow cone stand, looking from the shopping center over to where the unused mini golf area is and a cash points automated teller there. Then, actually, I don't have copies for everyone. I've just asked those clerk to hold those for the time being. They're not copies for everyone. I can distribute some if there's specific questions about those. The second exhibit, 1B, is of the shopping center from the site that you can see there. 1C is also of the shopping center from a different... from the other site slightly to the east. There's the abandoned building at the corner of Jones Franklin and Tryon Street across from this location. There is a Kangaroo Express on the other side of Jones Franklin Street. And then immediately adjacent to this site is the Brakes Plus site. So you have an automotive repair shop immediately adjacent to this site. We recognize that this is a general commercial zone district. There are a lot of uses that are allowed here by right. Filling stations are allowed here by right, car washes by right, a number of other uses. This is a reuse of this general commercial zoning district. And the only reason we are here is because of the town's position that a car wash is a drive-through use that is required for site plan before you. But the use itself is permitted legislatively by the rezoning classification of this parcel. There are six criteria, as you well know, for the approval of the site plan. The evidence that you have received already in the packets that came to you. The aerial photographs that have been provided shows the area. And let me... Let's see if I can go back to that. Maybe back to 51, I believe. Sorry. Maybe I was... There was... There is the... Again, the area around it gives you some idea of the shopping center to the south. The use is along Tryon Road, Walnut Street, Jones Franklin Road. So this is gonna be, you know, along major commuter routes of this part of town, a very appropriate use in harmony with the surrounding areas. You'll hear more of that from our witnesses that are to come. But in light of the testimony that's been presented and that you will hear from our expert witnesses, we believe that we will have submitted competent material and substantial evidence of the compliance with all six of the criteria of your ordinance for a use in the general commercial district. I have with me tonight a number of folks that have sworn in. Not everyone I will call. But let me just say that Mr. Chris Morgan, who is the construction manager for Sam's Express Car Wash, who's sitting to my left. Also, Michael Hill, who is the chief operating officer of Sam's Express, is here as well. As you have heard at a previous meeting, Sam's Express is coming to the Triangle area. It has one opened in Apex, one in Knightdale, I believe, and one in Lake Forest. They have proven to be extremely popular. There's been a high demand for the particular services that they provide. Well-received, and we think that it will be an asset to this area and consistent with your land use plan for redevelopment of older shopping areas such as this. Our expert witnesses include Jeremy Roberts, our civil engineer, Mr. Rich Kirkland, our appraiser, and Mr. Travis Fluid, our traffic engineer. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Jeremy Roberts, our civil engineer, to testify next. But I'm glad to answer any questions that you have before I sit down.
Before you move to your expert witnesses, I don't know what's in the handouts. My question is, is there new evidence that's gonna be presented that is not in the staff report in those handouts that is not gonna be covered? I need to know what's in the handouts. Because if there's new evidence in the handouts, then council may decide to continue this hearing till another time.
We would like you to go forward tonight with the proceeding. The only information... I think the traffic... If I'm not mistaken, the traffic impact report was...
Summary.
Was provided to the town, and that is the basis for the town's evaluation of the traffic. What the report is, is all the data that went into that report. There's nothing new there other than the supporting data that goes into Mr. Fluid's testimony that you will hear. If... I do not want this to be delayed tonight, so if you think that is inappropriate to submit into the record, I'm just doing it for purposes of completeness, to ensure that the record is complete, to show the... As Mr. Silverstein knows, the factual basis of an expert opinion, you can hear Mr. Fluid's professional opinion, but this is simply the documentation that supports the opinion that you will hear tonight. Likewise, with Mr. Kirkland, to the extent that he undertook an analysis of the surrounding properties and reached a professional opinion, the basis for that opinion is just set forth in a written document. But he can summarize that to you orally, orally. So I would be glad not to submit additional documents into the record. But, you know, I also...
I think that's your safest bet.
Okay.
Because if you don't do that, I'm gonna ask council members to look at it. And if they decide we have new evidence that we haven't had time to review, then they may decide to continue this hearing till another time. But if you think all that information's gonna be covered, then I would recommend you...
I do think all that evidence will be covered, and I'll ask Mr. Fluid and Mr. Kirkland to explain the basis of their opinions. It may result in their testimony being a little more detailed than it otherwise would. But I would... I will not move those exhibits into evidence.
Okay. And now I'm gonna ask advice of my attorney if you think I'm being incorrect or making an incorrect move or advice is what I'm looking for here.
You are not making an incorrect move or advice because it's sometimes hard for you to do that in your position as chair of these proceedings. I think that you could do it either way. You could consider it to be new evidence that you would have to consider at a future meeting. Or you could hear from the experts and allow them to introduce their background and materials if you determine that would be appropriate at that time.
But not having seen what's been put over here, I can't tell if there's something written that's not said that now will be inserted as part of the testimony. That's my concern.
That's why I'm saying, as chair, you can do it either way.
Yeah, I would prefer to take the safe route. So I'm gonna ask council members if they have any objection to my proposal.
To leave it, to not collect it.
To not collect it.
Okay, that's... I did not want to provide information to you outside of the... Some boards do not want to receive evidence except from an applicant, except through staff, outside of the hearing for fear it might be expartee inappropriate, just as it would be inappropriate if you were to receive emails and comments. So I erred on not wanting you to have information that wasn't presented by sworn testimony. So that was my purpose for not providing it earlier, not to hide anything.
So very good. So as we proceed, if you think we need a handout, then we can look at it and decide at that point. But my understanding is, right now, you would like to not distribute those handouts.
They have been labeled, but they have not been introduced into evidence. So at this point, I'll just ask my witnesses to explain the background of the information they've provided.
Very good. Thank you.
With that, I'll ask Mr. Jeremy Roberts, our civil engineer, to come forward with his testimony.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Jeremy Roberts. I'm with Eagle Engineering. I'm a senior associate with 13 years of experience. We've been working with Steph since about March, trying to work through all the comments on the plan. We're finally to a point to address everything and ready to present it before you. Based on the documents that have been... Excuse me. Based on documents that have been presented, my work on the project and my training and experience, it's my professional opinion that the development plans comply with all applicable requirements of the LDO and all criteria pertaining to the same has been satisfied. This includes all applicable town specifications and official plans and manuals or documents adopted by the town. And if you don't have any questions for me, I'd like to present Rich Kirkland.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
Of Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts, you prepared a landscape plan that is part of the packet that's been presented to council. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And is it correct that, even though this exhibit here doesn't show it, other than in light green, that your landscape plan calls for the planting of 80 trees as part of the buffering landscaping around the site? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And 200 shrubs are part of the landscaping?
Right.
To meet all the requirements of the ordinance for this site?
That's correct. A buffer along Franklin Springs Road, a buffer along Campbell Road as well.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Rich Kirkland. I'm a certified general appraiser in the state of North Carolina. Been appraising the state for 22, 23 years, somewhere in that range. I'm an MAI through the Appraisal Institute. Real familiar with this location, the shopping center, and maybe more particular. Very familiar with Berry's, to be specific. But, yeah, I was asked to look at this and see if... whether or not it was in harmony with the area and whether it had to impact on adjoining property values. It's my professional opinion that the plan adequately protects adjoining property and from any potential adverse effects. It's also my professional opinion that it's in harmony and unity with the development around it. To speak just briefly on what I looked at and what I was concerned, I mean, I've appraised this type of car wash before and other types of car washes as well in Chapel Hill and Raleigh. Again, all the adjoining uses are commercial in nature. This is where these types of facilities are located, either in out parcel locations or highway commercial areas. Again, this is very consistent with that. The... There are no adjoining residential uses to even consider. And I've actually looked at these facilities in relation to residential use before and found, you know, what is the appropriate distances and proximity to that? In this case, it really is just a very complementary use between the mini storage that's proposed and the brake facility right there, the Brakes Plus. Again, the mini storage is complementary with the car wash, as is the automotive repair. So this is, in my opinion, a very harmonious location for this facility. Be happy to go into greater detail or answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final witness on the other criteria is Mr. Travis Fluid.
Good evening. Travis Fluid with Kimley Horn and Associates, 421 Fayetteville Street, Suite 600, Raleigh. I am a professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, performing TIAAs for 14 years. Master's degree in civil engineering from the University of Texas of Austin. I prepared the traffic impact analysis for this site in coordination with town transportation staff and NC DOT staff. We reviewed seven intersections in the vicinity of the site, including Tryon Road and Holy Springs Road, Walnut Street. And all of the intersections operate acceptable level service that built out of the site. And therefore, no roadway improvements were recommended. The TA was reviewed by both town staff and NCOT staff, and both concurred with the assessment that no roadway improvements should be required. Based on the TIA document, my work on this project, and my training experience, my professional opinion that the site plan provides safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists and prevents a dangerous arrangement of pedestrian and vehicular ways. That the plan provides safe ingress and egress for emergency vehicles to the site. And that the plan provides mitigation for traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project.
Again, if there are any questions regarding the software that was used by Mr. Fluid to do the analysis of those seven intersections, and the data that he compiled from traffic reports, we have that information available to present to you to support his professional opinion. Likewise, we have a report that... by Mr. Kirkland that talks about his review... Likewise, we have a report that, uh, by Mr. Kirkland that talks about his review of the analysis that supports his conclusion and professional opinion that it complies with the second and third criteria, that the plan adequately protects other properties or residential uses located on the same property from potential adverse effects and provides harmony and unity with the development of nearby properties. So with the expert witnesses that you have heard from, that constitutes competent material and substantial evidence that each of the six criteria have been satisfied. Uh, Mr. Roberts has been working with staff, there's Desmond there, been working with Desmond for a number of months. Uh, we've gone through a number of revisions to try to address staff's, uh, issues and try to make sure that we comply with all the requirements of ordinance. It's been a good working relationship. Sam's Express is excited about providing its services here in the town of Cary and believes that, that this is a prime area for redevelopment and that their use at this location is very appropriate, consistent with your land use plan, not that that's part of your consideration, but is consistent with your land use plan and objectives for redevelopment of areas exactly like this, to provide a service that would be beneficial to the residents of the town of Cary. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Have a question.
Well, when we get to the-
Do it, the deliberative phase?
Yes.
Fine, fine.
Unless it's a clarification.
Well, it is clarification, because, uh, the Texas guy, um, did, when you did your analysis, that morning, the mornings there are horrific. You know, everybody's coming off Holly Springs Road and they back up on Jones Franklin. So is that, does your data reflect that and the impact it has to the egress and egress there?
It does. Uh, we did see long queues on Jones Franklin Road, you know, people cut the corner from northbound Holly Springs Road to get to Tryon Road and then up Jones Franklin Road. However, the site doesn't generate a lot of AMP car traffic, uh, so there are a number of ways people can get out onto Jones Franklin Road from the site. There's the side driveway shown on, on this exhibit and the one just off.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that, uh, from your analysis and based on, uh, the model that a car wash uses, your peak, it's not a, a critical, um, a time, let's say at eight o'clock in the morning.
Correct. Yeah, there is some queuing, but the site is not generating a lot of traffic at that time.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Fuller to follow up that question. You know, is part of your consideration also the multiple, um, points of ingress and egress from the site as well as the circulation within the site that would minimize queuing as well?
Yes, that is correct.
And personally, I'll have follow-up questions when we get to the deliberative phase, especially about egress. At this time, I'll invite speakers who've been sworn in who would like to speak in support of the application to approach the podium. Anyone to speak in support?
I'm downed.
Any need for any cross-examination at this time? Okay, well, open it up to those who are opposed to the request. As a reminder to those testifying, please limit your testimony to the facts that you know. The applicant's representative has a right to object to your testimony. They may object while you're speaking, and they have the right to do that. And our contractual attorney who's sitting to my left will help determine what evidence we may consider. And I would invite you to the podium. Anyone to speak in opposition?
My name is Dr. Gregory Lucier. I'm here representing myself, my wife Catherine, our two children. We live at 2701 Campbell Road.
Mayor. We'll need to interrupt just a second. I don't have any-
Oh, you have to be sworn in to speak.
I was sworn in with the group, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, I was part of your swearing in.
Okay.
Yes, I also represent other neighbors who were unable to be here tonight, who were intimidated to speak at a quasi judicial hearing, uh, or who were elderly, unable to come out at night. I have some evidence I would like to submit. I have copies for everyone up front. I'll leave these with you.
I'd like to be able to see the evidence.
So, so we can only accept evidence from expert witnesses, is my understanding? And you have not been clarified as an expert witness? So what you can do is tell what you have observed, like at such and such a time of day, I have observed this.
Yes.
I know these things. You cannot give opinions and you cannot submit evidence unless you're an expert witness.
I will proceed in that fashion, and I may wish to be declared an expert on certain topics.
Okay.
As I said, I'm representing myself and a group of neighbors. I will change my discussion a bit in light of what you, you just said, but I have five points I plan to speak to, and those points are summarized in the handout for the group. The first point is an existing and ongoing concern related to a temporary sign at the site, a violation of the land development ordinance. A sign posted on the corner of the property of Campbell Road and Tryon Road seems to be covered by Section 9 of the Land Development Ordinance, but does not seem to be in compliance. The sign is 80 inches tall, that's twice the height permitted by the LDO. The sign board alone measures seven feet wide by four feet tall, that's about 28 square feet, which is about twice the area permitted by the LDO. The sign appears to be grossly in excess of LDO requirements and seems to demonstrate a non-seriousness on behalf of the applicant that has been observed by the neighborhood of complying with the LDO. The neighbors believe that other claims made by the applicant should be taken with skepticism in result of this demonstration.
And I think that's an opinion.
Uh, well, it's a fact that the neighbors believe it, but still an opinion.
Dr. Lucier, let me, let me say something to you.
Yes.
You've got to follow rules.
Understood.
Okay? One of those rules is that if you are here in a representative capacity, you must be an attorney. So you need to limit, as the mayor's already said, you need to limit your testimony to your personal observations. You're not representing anyone else. You're representing yourself, and you're making your personal observations known. But you can't make, represent other people and you can't make legal conclusions.
Uh, sir, I believe the quasi judicial hearing procedure on the town website allows non-attorneys to be representatives of their group, and in fact, that group representation is encouraged by the quasi judicial procedure.
That's a misreading of what's on the website, so maybe that needs to be changed.
Very well. The sign is shown in Exhibit 2. It claims the car wash is coming soon, and it has caused concern from the neighbors because they have believed and have stated that they, they feel like the sign has indicated that no opportunity for comment has existed. You can see the exhibit, Exhibit 1 here, the sign is in the northeast corner of the property. We have the exhibit, if we can distribute those to the council. Is that allowable?
When I ask if a picture is an observation, is that the same as an observation?
If the sign's in the ground, that's pretty factual, right?
The sign is cemented in the ground.
So we can see the picture. And so I'm asking if, if it's, if it's truly a picture.
It's a photograph, yes, sir. I have it here.
Whether or not this evidence is relevant is a different question, but certainly can testify as to his, his observations. You continue to say the neighbors. You're going to have to stop doing that. These have to be your personal observations.
I will proceed as best I can with personal observations. Thank you. The applicant has failed to recognize, this is point 2, we have environmental concerns. The applicant has failed to recognize and consider substantial environmental issues in their application. The application omits the fact that groundwater-
So that's an opinion.
Yes.
And you're not an expert in that area. I hate to do this. We're bound by state and federal laws that don't allow this.
Can I declare myself an expert in groundwater?
You said he's not. Can he have the opportunity to present himself as an expert before we say?
I would like to present myself as an expert in the area of groundwater remediation and pollution.
And your qualifications are?
I have a PhD in civil engineering from NC State University. I serve on the faculty of civil construction and environmental engineering at NC State University. I am a co-owner of a research and development company focused on groundwater remediation, and I hold a US patent in the field of groundwater remediation. May I proceed?
So, hold on just a second. Ms. Silverstein?
I believe you satisfied that threshold.
I just wanted to make sure I had legal advice.
I didn't know if you're a P, MD, or, I didn't know what you, you said doctor, I didn't know what you were.
I'm a citizen.
Okay.
Concerns, and now I'm an expert.
So you're an expert in, in-
Groundwater.
In the fields of civil engineering and groundwater remediation.
Okay, very good.
May I present opinions in those areas?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The applicant has failed to recognize and consider substantial environmental issues. The failure to address or even to acknowledge potential environmental impacts to surrounding properties, especially impacts to residential water wells, means that the application is grossly non-compliant with LDO Section 3.9.2 and should be denied. The application egregiously omits the fact that groundwater on the northern boundary of the proposed site is known by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, the NCEQ, to be contaminated. Information on the contamination is available publicly on the NCEQ website, but is apparently unknown to the applicant. NCEQ incident number 26993 involved three 10,000 gallon underground fuel storage tanks at the former Swift Creek grocery. The incident remains open, it is classified as high risk, and contaminants remain in the groundwater. Does the applicant know the extent of the contaminant plume? Does the pollution cross onto the applicant's property? Will the applicant encounter contaminated soils or contaminated water during construction? Have the risks of locating a new fuel station with underground storage tanks on or near an already contaminated sensitive site been studied and mitigated? Does the applicant's proposed construction and excavation risk caused, potentially cause the existing contaminant plume to migrate towards residential wells, which are located as close as 500 feet to the applicant's property? This fact was egregiously neglected from the applicant's application and from the staff report, and I would hope for the opportunity to cross-examine, uh, on those points. Does the proposed use that involves substantial volumes of water and the introduction of car washing chemicals to the site have the potential to cause the existing contaminant plume to migrate? What chemicals does the applicant plan to use as part of their washing process? What are the hazards of those chemicals, and is there a potential for those chemicals to further contaminate surface and/or subsurface waters? None of the, none of the chemicals have been disclosed in any fashion. Extensive and detailed environmental study would be required to demonstrate the proposed use safe for surrounding properties. Such study would be necessary to properly formulate a competent stormwater and wastewater management plan. Failure to present any environmental study or even to acknowledge the documented hazards that already exist indicates that the requirements of LDO Sections 3, 7, 8, and possibly others could not possibly have been satisfied by the application, and the application should be denied. Moving on, we take issue with the appraisal in some of the same categories.
So we're now back to I, and you can't give an opinion. You're not an expert in appraisals.
I will, uh, go back to I.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I, I understand, I understand.
He might be.
Potentially. I am not, I'm not an expert in-
Okay, just, maybe we should ask.
Under the hazardous materials section of the appraisal, the appraiser writes, quote, "I consider this to be a non-factor for the impact analysis," end quote. Were the hazardous materials discussed in point number 2, the materials I raised considered by the appraiser, is the appraiser an expert in the area of environmental hazards? What evidence was relied upon in determining the, quote, "non-factor" status? Would the final conclusion of the appraisal change if hazardous materials were considered? I take other issue with the appraisal, and I will try to be factual. Under the stigma section of the appraisal, the appraiser writes, quote, "There is no stigma associated with the proposed use," end quote. Again, what evidence did the appraiser rely upon to determine?
I'll object at this point to opinions pertaining to real estate valuation that have been offered by this witness. There's, I mean, those types of real estate valuation experts can only be rendered by someone who is qualified in real estate sales and real estate appraisers, so I think an objection is appropriate at this point.
Ms. Silverstein?
I think the, the, the safest course would be to let him make his points, and then you can argue with, with respect to whether or not they should be considered by the council.
Thank you.
Yes, I will try to stick to facts. The appraiser states there is no stigma. The car wash industry recognizes that a stigma does exist, and this is evidenced by a December 2014 issue of Auto Laundry News, promoted as one of the leading industry publication. Anthony Anatello's article entitled, quote, "Car Washing Investing: 10 Misconceptions," end quote, notes that, quote, "Unfortunately, the stigma associated with car washing persists in many communities." We note stigma was indicated as a, uh, non-factor. There, there's no stigma associated with the-
Dr. Lucier, let me, and after I've said that we should listen to you, I think that you need to know that when you start quoting articles like that, that's considered hearsay, and I would advise the council not to consider that before Mr. Stires even objects to it.
I, you'll, you'll have to forgive me, this is not something I do frequently, so I appreciate your patience.
This is a good learning process for all of us.
Under the odor section of the appraisal, the appraiser writes, quote, "The project as presented has no specific concerns related to odor and is therefore a non-factor for the impact analysis." And I assume the quote is acceptable since it's part of the record. Gasoline has an odor and will be sold onsite, and the car washing chemicals used onsite potentially have an odor. Those are, are facts. Another fact of the appraisal is that the conclusions of the appraisal only reference adjoining properties. The land development ordinance requires consideration of, of nearby and other properties. The appraisal is carefully written to only provide concluding statements on adjoining properties. The residential properties immediately to the south and surrounding the proposed use do not directly adjoin to the proposed use, but are in the immediate vicinity. And I, and I hope those are sufficient facts. Related to the traffic study, a major signaled intersection is located immediately east of the proposed site, that is Yates Mill Pond Road and Tryon Road, and that intersection seems to have been excluded by the traffic study. There are two public schools in the immediate vicinity of this intersection, and those, school traffic would, would travel through that intersection. I suppose that's an opinion, my apologies for that. The traffic study was conducted on a single day for two brief periods, between 7:00 and 9:00 AM, and again between 4:00 and 6:00 PM on Tuesday, April 24th. The report portrays these times as peak. However, the school in the area starts at 9:15 AM and ends at 3:45 PM, hours outside the hours reported as peak. Again, hopefully that is factual. I'm trying to avoid opinions. I should note, this, this major intersection is within one quarter mile of the proposed site. And we have a photograph, although that's probably hearsay based on the prior photograph, so we will move along. We've heard the roadway non-compliance request, reducing the corner distance from 200 feet to 100 feet. We, I am opposed to that. Roadway standards are in place to ensure public safety, that is a fact, and cutting the required safe distance of 200 feet to 100 feet is what is proposed. So a shorter distance should, uh, lead to, um, reduced safety. Hopefully that's a factual claim, and I've-
Actually, yeah, fair enough.
Another factual item I would like to mention, the, many of the documents referenced in the application, I believe the appraisal and possibly the traffic study and others, make mention to a, an abandoned mini golf, an abandoned ice cream shop and so forth. Those are scattered throughout the application. Many of those documents have dates of April 2018, March of 2018, and so forth. The ice cream shop closed on October 1st of this year. It was open at the time these documents claimed it was abandoned. It is a, and I'll avoid opinion, so, um, those are the facts as I can present them. My apologies for the opinions where they're not warranted. The groundwater is a major concern, that is my expert opinion. The car washing chemicals need to be investigated, that is my expert opinion. The substantial water use and how it relates to the groundwater contamination that is in close proximity to the site, if not at the site, is also my expert opinion. And, um, I would also like the opportunity to cross-examine the applicant and the expert witnesses, if you'll afford that to me.
I think you'll be cross-examined first, but I want to thank you- I think you'll be cross-examined first, but I want to thank you for doing it. Out of all the citizens that don't do this for a living, you're probably the best one we've ever had, by far.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I do not.
And you did well, even though we kept interrupting you, you did very well, and I want to thank you for bearing with us and doing the best you can.
Thank you for your time, and I'll be happy to entertain questions, cross-examination.
So cross-examination, please.
Just have a few, I won't, I won't take too much time. I think you said you were not a traffic engineer, having studied the, from a traffic engineer, you've never worked for a traffic engineering firm, have you?
That's correct, I'm a researcher in the field of civil engineering.
And you have not examined any of the traffic counts generated by a use such as the one proposed at this location, have you?
I've examined the counts as presented in the report, but not in an expert capacity.
Do you have any information that those counts are not correct based upon standards used by traffic engineers?
I do not, I don't question the validity of the counts themselves.
Are you aware that the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources issued a closure decision on the former underground storage tanks of this location on October 3rd, 2007?
That is not what is on their website, which is the facts I am going by, so I'm not aware of that, no.
Okay. Or that there was a full investigation prior to that closure by the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources Groundwater Section in 2006? You are not aware of that?
I am not. If it were presented as part of the application, I would be aware of it.
And you realize that uses such as this, environmental regulation is the province of the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, Groundwater Section, is it not?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And they have standards that govern uses on lands in the state of North Carolina, do they not?
They do.
Do you have any information before this board that the proposed use would violate any of those, or uses of SAMs expressed anywhere else have violated the environmental standards or laws of the state of North Carolina?
I do not, I'm not concerned with SAMs in other locations. It is the applicant's burden of proof to demonstrate that the site is in compliance with the LDO, so I do not have evidence to present.
Are you aware that SAMs Express had a Phase 1 environmental study done of this property?
Again, that was not included in the application, so I was not aware. That seems to have been withheld.
And so you're not aware that that Phase 1 environmental report concluded that there were no environmental risks associated with this property?
I am not aware, that has not been made available for public review. Seems to have been hidden from the record.
You're also aware that there are standards by the North Carolina Department of Labor, Occupational Safety and Health Administration regarding the use of chemicals at workspaces such as car washes?
I'm aware there are standards, yes.
And are, do you have any information that those standards by the North Carolina Department of Labor, OSHA, will not be followed in every respect at this SAMs location?
I have no doubt that they, they will not be followed, they certainly will be followed, is what I would expect from any decent organization. That is not what is at issue here.
You do not yourself have a real estate license, do you?
I do not, no.
Or a real estate broker's license?
I do not, no.
And you are not an MAI appraiser?
I am not, no.
If I may, go to another slide here. I am pointing you to a slide that was part of the staff's recommendation. I don't know when that slide was taken, but generally is there any information on that slide that is currently not accurate, to your knowledge, current land uses?
The presentation of this slide ignoring the presence of single-family homes was an inaccurate portrayal of the area.
Now, my question was, is there anything on this slide that is inaccurate?
There does not appear to be.
I have no further cross-examination at this time.
Does staff have any cross-examination? Okay. Let's see where that takes us. So we are at staff's professional opinion, or can we allow?
Does he get to cross-examine?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, he didn't ask it at the top. Who did you want to cross-examine?
I would like to cross-examine the applicant to begin with, please.
Mr. Silverstein, does he need to be a party, or? I'm not sure about the appropriateness of him being able to cross-examine someone.
Yeah. Here's the problem we're struggling with. There's, there's an issue involving standing, perhaps you've heard that talked about before. In a proceeding like this, it is not necessary to have standing to come and testify before a body, as Dr. Bashir has done. That's, it's not necessary to stand. But in order to cross-examine other parties, you have to be a party to the proceeding. So when he requests the opportunity to cross-examine, he has to demonstrate that he has standing, and he has not done that, and based on North Carolina law, I don't think he can demonstrate standing. So he can come and he can give his personal observations, but he cannot act as a party to the proceeding. And I think that's the point Ms. Glover was making.
I'm sorry, I have to go by the attorney's, I'm not an attorney.
Understood, thank you for your consideration.
Can I ask, do we mail out notifications to neighbors for quasi-judicial?
You do, but only to adjacent property owners. There was one neighbor on our street that received a notification, no one else.
He's got something.
We did, state statute requires abutting property owners be notified, however, the town does exceed that threshold. 800 foot is what we use for rezonings. For development plans, we have historically for years used 400 foot, and this is the notification map that we used.
So we notified people who have no standing, but I'm trying to figure out if we notify them, they have no standing because they're adjacent?
It's a legal, standing is a legal concept. So they have an, let me use this word, they have an interest, and they can come in and they can present their views to you and their observations to you, but they do not have the same standing, a party, before you would.
Okay.
The party would be the applicant. They're a party before you. Just because someone lives within a certain distance of the site does not automatically make them a party.
So the questions he posed were questions that we have on our minds now that were questioned of the testimony, so then they become our questions, basically, if that's what you're saying. He doesn't cross-examine them, but they can become your questions. That's what I'm saying, they can become our questions.
They don't automatically become your questions, but it's possible. And it's also possible that, that some of his questions are not appropriate for anyone to ask.
Okay. And as, without standing, are we able to ask questions of any expert that's been sworn in?
Sure.
Okay, that's good.
We're getting there.
That's, I'm just making sure we can ask him if he's an expert.
I believe Mr. Silverstein, is appropriate for me to call rebuttal witness at this time?
Well, what?
And, or you tell me when it would be appropriate for me to call rebuttal witness.
Where are you in your proceedings, maybe?
So we just had the, those speaking in opposition, we did cross-examination. The next thing on my list is to provide professional observation, so I would think it would be appropriate at this time. Rebuttal witness.
Okay. I'll call Mr. Chris Morgan to the witness stand, he has been previously sworn.
Good evening. During our due diligence phase.
Let me just, just to frame this, would you like to respond to some of the questions that have been made, statements have been made by the opposing witness tonight?
I do.
Okay, what were some of the corrections and information you'd like to provide?
I would like to provide that during our due diligence phase, we do typically do Phase Ones. We are a fueling company, so we do know the state of North Carolina and federal regulations. So during our due diligence phase, we did do a Phase One, which did bring the, delete the underground storage tank issue. During that, we found that there was a closure report by the North Carolina DEQ. So at that point in time, it become the closed issue for us. The tanks are remediated, the dirt was remediated. In the Phase One, it was shown that the contaminated dirt was removed from the site, replaced with good dirt. This report was actually done by ECS here out of Raleigh on November 15th of 2017.
Do you have a copy of the closure report there on your phone?
I do.
And have you reviewed that closure report?
I have.
Are there any unresolved issues that are identified in that closure report by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality?
It does not say. And in regards to the, the question about our chemicals, all of the chemicals that we use in our car wash facility are 100% biodegradable. We do capture all of our water in reclaim tanks and recycle that water with very minimal water leaving our system and going into the city system.
Mr. Morgan is available for any questions that you may have, or any questions that are in your mind at this point about the, about the issues that have been raised, or about the quality of the operations of this facility?
So I'm guessing we're going to have a lot of questions when we get to the deliberative phase, which we're getting very close to.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Staff professional observations about the requests.
Pivot reformat a little bit, because there's a lot of information just came forward. But staff's general observations, it's generally consistent with requirements of the LDO and all other applicable regulations. A lot of what the residents spoke about was state regulations or federal regulations, which are outside the purview of the town, so I cannot speak to those. No interior buffers on the site, it's in a mixed-use district, and therefore properties within are not required to buffer from other properties that are within. Mentioned before, the streetscapes are being supplemented to bring them into compliance with current LDO standards. The applicant did indicate they are providing additional evergreen screening along Campbell Road and along the internal travelway to the south, so the driveway, the drive-through lanes will be screened by additional material. If you remember, there was a staff observation about pedestrian connectivity to the parking spaces located on the western end of the site. Subsequent to staff report preparation and uploading the attachments, there was a recent note for this plan, and they did have added a sidewalk shown here along the western edge of the site to get pedestrians from those parking spaces over to wherever they would like to go from there. TA was performed and was attached to the staff report as an attachment, so you do have all the calculations and data and all that. That was reviewed by NC DOT and the town, and both agencies agreed to those findings and the suggestion that no mitigations would really make a difference in the surrounding neighborhood, the surrounding intersections, given the proportion of traffic being added and the variety of options available to get out of the site. Briefly, the applicant did mention that they're recycling all of their water, that is probably true. However, any discharges do not go into the groundwater, or do not go into the stormwater system, they go into sanitary sewer, and therefore they would be required to comply with our sanitary sewer discharge requirements. Talk very briefly about architecture. It's predominantly brick building, two-tone brick, a little bit of EFS trim, no garish colors, red, a toned-down darker, desaturated red awning is the only color being used in the proposed building. The speaker prior to this also mentioned the construction sign, that was brought to our attention earlier in the week, that construction sign was erected in violation of our land development ordinance. You're not allowed to have a construction sign until you have an approved development plan, development compliance officers are aware of that and are taking appropriate actions and working that through the system. So we have responded to that citizen and responded that we're on it, and we'll be working to get that removed. And with that, that concludes my remarks, we're available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. So we have had, and I'll call an unexpected expert witness, we have had new information tonight. So this is the point in the hearing where I ask counsel if they want this hearing continued. I know the applicant has already stated he does not want that, but this is the opportunity for counsel to continue this hearing if you believe it's warranted. So before we move forward.
May I summarize, I believe I have an opportunity to kind of provide a summary concluding remarks and move my evidence, exhibits under, the evidence, Mr. Silverstein, is that correct?
Sure.
That seemed to be the practice from earlier this evening.
You do, but certainly the mayor can bring up this, this point whenever he would like to, and I don't see any problem with him continuing this discussion as to whether or not the council wants to defer this matter, which I think they can do at any time. I think they can do that prior to your summary.
So thoughts, counsel? I'll ask if there's any objection to continuing, that'll make it easier.
I have no, well, I understand that some people would like to see it go on, go ahead and be voted on. The only concern I have is you have an expert witness who did not get to review the documents, so if that expert witness had the chance to review the documents and then come back and tell us that the documents satisfy the concerns that I have, then that would, you know, that would kind of close that, those outlined concerns. I just don't know, I just don't know what the right thing to do is here, because this is, I have no experience with this.
And I would agree with what was quoted earlier, if somebody's reading from a article about washing, what do they call it, car wash is unlimited or whatever, and they can't do that because it's hearsay, can someone stand up and read from their cellphone from the state website about the EPA closing something, and we accept that and it not be hearsay without us actually knowing it for ourselves, or our staff having reviewed that, because I don't see the difference between the two?
Interesting.
Good question.
Yeah.
There's two major, two key differences there, as Mr. Silverstein will explain.
The difference is, is that this gentleman was actually involved, and the other gentleman spoke about an article that he read in some publication, and there was no ability to, I'm not sure what that publication is.
But, okay.
He was speaking of his personal experience with the, with the state on this determination. I mean, I think that's what you were going to say.
All right, well then what about the, if the state website in another place doesn't show that it's been, if there's a website out that doesn't show that it's been remediated, why would we, there's, that sounds like it's two conflicting websites to me.
You might be having high expectations for a state government entity. So, I'm going to, you asked for comment?
But the bottom line for that, though, is that what Mr. Hale said earlier is that there are certain issues that are within the jurisdiction of the state and certain issues that are within the jurisdiction of the town. So I think what they would say to you is it doesn't matter what's on the state website, that's a state issue, and that's, and any, any concern that the citizen might have should be taken to the state for action rather than to the town.
To us, okay, I hear you.
So let me review where we are, Don. So the, if we don't at this moment continue, then we hear closing arguments, then we move to the deliberative phase, and we can continue at any time. If you'd rather do that, proceed a little further where you can make comments, ask questions, and then we can decide, hey, let's continue this or not, then that might be the way to go.
I would pursue, prefer to pursue further.
Well, you're so emphatic about it.
And while I appreciate the concerns that we've heard, I actually have a lot of concerns and questions that haven't even been addressed or talked about yet.
Okay, so let's go there.
Keep going, and then.
So if there's not an objection, we're going to keep on, and I'll recognize, Mr. Stires, you want to do closing arguments.
I just want to summarize very briefly. You know, you have six specific criteria in Section 3.9.2I that pertain to whether or not, you know, we have submitted the competent material and substantial evidence as an evidentiary matter to, that these criteria have been satisfied or not. So the first criteria is whether we have complied with Sections, Chapter 7 and 8 of the ordinance in terms of the LDO requirements of the site plan through the six rounds of comments, and are working with Desmond and others to make sure that we have met every single technical requirement of the ordinance. And you have that set of site plans in front of you, and you've heard the report of staff, so that first criteria is satisfied. The second criteria and the third criteria has to do with protection of property or residential uses located on the same property. And there you have the, your knowledge as well as the exhibit that has been presented showing the. showing the surrounding area, showing the other uses in the area, showing the shopping center, the Brakes Plus, the Kangaroo Plus, the other areas. So you can, you can both use the surrounding area as well as the expert testimony of Mr. Rich Kirkland to, as substantial material and evidence that the second item and the third item have been satisfied. And there is no competent material or substantial evidence with regards to those two issues based upon the cross-examination that Dr. Waseer is not a real estate broker, has no license, is not an appraiser, has not looked at other properties, whereas Mr. Kirkland testified he had looked at other properties in other areas of the car washes as well as was very familiar with this site. So items two and three have been satisfied and there's been no competent material or substantial evidence to the contrary. Items four and five and six have to do with the traffic flow and ingress and egress, and I'm sure you may have other questions, but it's worth noting, as Mr. Hale said, that the traffic reports have been reviewed by both DOT and the Town of Cary Transportation Department. There's a very thick report prepared by Kim Lee Horn that looked at seven different intersections. So we have presented competent material and substantial evidence as to the fourth, fifth, and sixth criteria, and there is no competent material and substantial evidence to the contrary. So given that the six criteria have been satisfied, then we think it would be appropriate for the board to vote tonight and vote to approve. Now, I will also say that, as Mr. Silverstein's pointed out, that the concerns that have been raised are not concerns that fall under those six categories and are not within the province of the town, but rather subject to regulation by the Department of Labor or Department of Environmental Quality or other state agencies that have specific expertise and specific standards to govern those issues, groundwater issues such as he was an expert on, but those are not the issues that fall to the jurisdiction of the town or are subject to a land use approval of a permitted use in the general commercial district that is only before you because of it being classified as a drive-through use. So I will say that we will make a point to meet with the gentleman who spoke earlier. We will provide him with as much information as we would like, as he would like, we will present to him the information from the state and the other information regulated by the state because we're gonna make sure we do the right thing in complying with all regulations that are before us. So, and with regards to the sign, that was an oversight for which we apologize and we are making efforts by text tonight in the last 30 minutes to make sure that sign is taken down. It was, it was put up by someone who did not understand what the regulations were and that is not going to be an issue going forward. Again, but it's also not one of the six criteria that is before you. We are happy to answer any questions that you may have and will be here as long as you want to, but we know you have a busy agenda at each of your meetings coming up. We are in fact coming back to you in the not-too-distant future with a resounding of our own and we know how many other items are on your agenda. There is no reason to, we believe, to continue this case tonight, given the evidence that's before you. But if that is the board's decision, we will certainly respect that and come back at another time. All the witnesses and all the persons sworn in tonight are available to answer any questions that you might have, and we appreciate your patience and consideration listening to our case tonight.
Thank you. Any, anything else from the town? Okay, we'll move into the deliberative phase of the hearing and I'll open it up to council members for questions, comments. Ms. French?
First question, okay, the blue rectangle, that's the gas pumps, right?
That is the gas pumps, correct.
Okay, and in the brown building, that's the car wash, right?
That is correct.
Where is the convenience store?
There is no convenience store.
None at all?
Just gas pumps.
So standalone gas pumps under a canopy?
Correct.
Okay. What I'm looking at here looks like a sea of asphalt to me with standalone gas pumps on one side of the site, very disconnected from the car wash on the other far side of the site. Can somebody explain to me why this site is laid out the way it is? I have seen gas stations, convenience stores with the car washes occupy a third of this much property. Why is this much land, this much asphalt needed here?
It's actually concrete, it's not asphalt.
Okay, it's still impervious surface.
But I do, it's pavement. The reason that it is laid out the way that it is is because we require, our prototype requires a certain amount of stacking and that stacking actually elongates the site. The stacking is actually the two areas that are right there before the paystation islands. The yellow, the yellow striped area will actually be changed and that will be put into landscaping, so it will not be a concrete product or asphalt product. But that's one of the reasons why it's so elongated because we do have the need for stacking for the vehicles. And as far as the gas canopy being sort of out there on its own, everything is controlled by the car wash. You can pay underneath the gas canopy or at the pumps, but the customer also has the opportunity to come to the car wash office, which can take payment too. So it's integrated into one and we do not have a convenience store.
This isn't a typical, I mean, this is a new, a new concept, a new product to provide the customer sitting, customer experience that with ancillary filling pumps for those who want to pump gas while they are there, but is not first and foremost a filling station, is not a convenience store, but given ensuring the traffic flow through there and the drying stations and this layout's fairly typical, I won't say typical, every, every site's unique, given the property, but to ensure that, you know, based upon the experience of how many Sam's Car Washes have you developed?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, twenty-three car washes that we've developed, you know, throughout North Carolina. This is a layout that works given the necessary stacking, the drying, and the experience of the customers at these locations.
How is stormwater handled on the site?
Address the stormwater detention on-site, Mr. Roberts? And there is a page in the site plan that addresses that as well.
Stormwater is being handled by an underground storage system as well as a filter system. So the stormwater quality is being treated by the filter system and detention is being provided in the underground storage system.
It's an expensive system, but if I remember correctly, it's in this area of the site underground.
That's correct.
Now that we know that this site was remediated for, and perhaps closed for an environmental problem, what is the impact of that? The storage units were removed, you know, what is the impact of having this underground storage close to what may have been a brown site at one point?
None whatsoever. Again, this site was completely, given complete closure, the underground, the former storage tanks by Cary Oil were removed, the soil was removed and clean soil placed in, so it's an absolute non-issue.
And during construction, if.
Can you come up to the?
Sure. During construction, if contamination is encountered, then we are obligated by the state to have a environmental engineer on-site to monitor that, and it will be removed and replaced.
The state reports do not indicate any current contamination because it was given full closure by the state.
What was this date of the closure?
November 17. Well, actually, our report, our Phase One is November 17.
And the closure was 2007.
I think it was.
So it was 10 years ago-ish? It must be why the site is flat and nothing there.
There were a lot of, a lot of the old storage tanks were removed and remediation process in the 90s and 2000s. I did a lot of legal work back in that period, enclosure of stations and removal of storage tanks, and quite frankly, got out of it because there wasn't much work to be done because they were all remediated and soils removed.
And Mr. Stires, can I ask you a question? So are there any deed restrictions or covenants that were placed on the site as a result of any of the remediation work that was done?
We have not investigated that, but none that we've encountered. I've not done the real estate title work for it, but none, and can, we purchased the property. This is not under option and there were no concerns raised at the time of the purchase.
And to answer your question, it was December 2008 is whenever ATC actually done a comprehensive site assessment and led to the closure of the report.
And that was for the, that was for the Ramcat branch of Grocery Boy Junior to the north? Okay.
Other questions?
Well, the, my questions are more traffic related.
Okay.
The, I think the most interesting thing that I heard during all of this was the fact that, you know, I'm not convinced that, you know, the way it was presented about the timing and the backup, that the factor of the school was in. I mean, when you read, when we've had all these other car washes come through, a lot of the things that we've found, just like with storage centers, is they want to be closer and closer now to communities and that there is actually, was data presented in past things that we've had here where a lot of times the, the car washes are, are more frequented by the female drivers. And then you think about a school and picking up kids and everything, you know, have we really, has your analysis really addressed the volume of traffic midday as was presented earlier? Is my question.
We did not look at the midday peaks. We focused on the commuter peaks, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. because that's when there's the most traffic on these roadways adjacent to the site. It may not, obviously, there is school traffic in the off peaks if the schools do in fact occur, you know, start at 9:15 into 3:45, that would not fall within those peaks, but there would be less overall traffic during that time than the periods we studied.
Understand, but also, as we keep hearing, it's a brave new world out there, traffic patterns change, people have cut through traffic, GPS, we deal with traffic models in the past that just don't recognize how traffic redirects itself based on the technology they have, both on their phones and in their cars. And, and I'm really just having a problem with this reduction of the queuing, it's 200 to 100, it's just, I mean, this is a god-awful area. I mean, this is just awful. And, you know, I applaud a lot of the new thinking that you're talking about, but, you know, my caution is still the traffic, is my observation.
On what he's, how do you know that it's, if you didn't count it between 9:00 and 4:00, how do you know it wasn't worse at 9:30?
I do not, but I relied on staff to dictate the peak hours that we would study and DOT to dictate the peak hours that we were, that we would study, and staff had a study of 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.
I'd like to know from staff how we know that that's the peak. In this location, obviously not in general.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that we would tell them when the peak hour is out there.
Mr. Jensen, will you tell everybody who you are?
Jerry Jensen, Director of Transportation Facilities. Yeah, again, this is not a traditional traffic study that, that goes in accordance with our LDO. This is upon the applicant to provide testimony and burden of proof that he, that the adequacy of the road system out there is based on their judgment and professional analysis. And I don't believe we've ever, that I'm aware of, that my staff or myself have dictated when actual, the peak hour of the school system matches with the peak hour of this facility. We generally, in standard engineering practices though, the, the peak hour is generally from those times that Mr. Fluidhead talked about. That's generally when we see the most volume of cars on the roadways, but when in proximity to schools, that may be, that may be different. So I think, I would suggest that, that he clarify those remarks about, about whether, who from staff would, would have dictated that.
I have a question for Mr. Jensen. There was, there was a question about the backing up and queuing. Can you just briefly explain what the SIM traffic software does and how you use the SIM traffic analysis for determining queuing and backing up?
I'm not sure that I need, what that, that is a, it's a software used by traffic engineers to simulate how traffic would enter and exit a site based on, on projected models and volumes that they put into that.
So that would be the type of software that would be utilized to determine the potential queuing?
It could be one method, yes. There's a lot of different methods to do that.
And the SIM traffic and simulations that were run indicated that the maximum queues on Franklin Springs would not be even 100 feet, would be 42 and 43 feet, was the report that your office reviewed.
That's the report that we received, yes, from, from the test, from the, from the expert that would, that wrote that document, yes.
And you approved that report?
I didn't reprove the report, I reproved the modification from 200 feet to 100 feet, so you gotta be very specific about what you're asking me.
I understand. Again, it just says approved, and I want to make sure I understood what the approval was.
I prove, again, the, our LDO and our, does allow the Director of Transportation Facilities the ability to make modifications to our standards and specifications based on the testimony I received from the, the engineer. I felt comfortable that, that we would not have any queuing or safety issues and I, I made the modification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen.
Can we continue on that? Because I understand if like we've had out near Green Hill High School discussions of traffic and the 7:00 to 9:00 was clearly in play because that's when high school goes. But when we're talking about next to a place that has a daycare and next to a public school and there's another school not too far away, it just doesn't seem right to be that we do traffic studies and accept them when there's not, we're not at the commuter time when people get dropped off at school. Because that's when I see the longest queuing lines, is when elementary schools, because they don't drive themselves.
I think you have a really good point because I didn't realize that that triangular building right there that's on this slide is Swift Keek Elementary.
Yeah.
So the one directly west, not even two blocks away, is where that queuing problem is, right from, from so many, you know, folks queuing up for carpool. That does seem to me something that's left out. It's information we don't have in order to make, I think, a valid decision, a business, you know, I'm sorry, a evidence-based decision.
Yeah.
I agree.
And I don't know how many people get, I mean, I know there's rules from elementary schools about how early you can drop them off, unless you pay for early whatever, is it, so you, you shoot for that 15-minute window that's just outside the traffic study.
So other questions or comments, or do we need to move to motion phase?
I have one more question, a technical question. So from the staff standpoint, did we specifically name car washes as a drive-through? We, we made them a drive-through specifically?
Well, they.
Or they named that?
Do drive-through this one.
They drive through the building, therefore it's a drive-through. There is no specificity, it could be a drive-through.
So I've got a question for the, the car wash people. Do people stay in their car at your, at your place? So this is not like someplace where you get out. Okay, that, that answers that question, it's a drive-through. I just, I know that sometimes they get out and they put it on a conveyor and it sucks it through, and I was just making sure I was understanding it was a real drive-through.
So, so if you, it's a drive-through and you stay in it, why is there seating? I'm just curious, why is there outdoor seating and all the extra seating?
Because in the lobby, we actually provide free coffee. We have a couple of vending machines actually inside of the lobby. So we actually have like a Wi-Fi bar in the lobby, plus we give outdoor seating in case somebody, let's say a family, one person's vacuuming the car, the other ones can actually sit out.
And so if you put a great big barricade at the end of it, is it no longer a drive-through? And it could be administrated? I'm just curious. It would have been administratively approved because it's not a drive-through? Not giving you a suggestion, but I just want to understand.
You have a hypothetical, what kind of barricade, where?
So.
Typically, if the car is going through the building, we consider it a drive-through.
So if it was just a car wash, it wouldn't come to us? I'm sorry, if it was just a.
Pull up.
No, if it was just a gas station, it wouldn't come up to, wouldn't come to us?
Correct, it's, it's the drive-through facility of the car wash that's driving it huge.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make.
Just for the record, we.
Just, just for the record, we have expressed our objection to this being classified as a drive-through use for not, for not knowing what a non-drive-through car wash might be. So I just wanted to say, no, for the record, there's no notation in your permitted use table that this requires anything more than site plan approval. Steph and I have discussed and we're here voluntarily to proceed in this fashion while reserving that argument if we need to make it at another forum.
I'm, I'm sure the Bojangles people would have agreed with you too, but I'm actually glad that it's a drive-through so that we can have this discussion and...
And we're, and we're happy to be here so we can have the discussion, but Bojangles may or may not have a drive-through, I'm not so sure what a non-drive-through car wash is. But that having been said, we're glad to be here to answer your questions.
And to also, to, to sort of expand on what we just said, yes, we do, the customer does sit in the car, they're not driving, it's being pulled.
Right.
They're on a conveyor.
Conveyor, okay.
And the car is not in drive, so.
But it's, it's running, they turn it off?
They could cut it off if they wanted to, but it is being pulled through.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor? Me, sorry. Mr. Silverstein, I wonder what's on my mind as I hear this discussion, Mr. Stires, is the recent City of Asheville Court of Appeals case, which I had actually planned to do a blurb about and send out to the entire council about expert testimony and, so I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that in terms of the traffic and what that might mean for, as they think about their deliberations right now?
Well, it, it, I think it's, it's a little hard to extrapolate that into, into this situation. I think that, that, I guess what Ms. Glover might be getting at is that once a prima facie case is made based on traffic information from a traffic expert, which, which has been done here, and then you come, what, what you are dealing with is speculation. You don't have evidence to the contrary, is, is that what, what you're getting? So what, what you are dealing with is speculation. So the question is, from a, from a legal standpoint, do you have evidence to deny this? And, and that's why, you know, one thing you consider, you can consider, I think, would be to defer this case to get the information that you want. There wouldn't be a problem with doing that at all, but it's questionable as to whether or not you could deny this application based on speculation as to what traffic might be at a particular time, since you don't have any evidence of what the traffic would be at that time.
But I asked the question and, and got the answer that there was speculation that seven to nine was the prime and they didn't count it after nine o'clock. So there's speculation on the traffic study. So that's what I'm questioning, I'm questioning the traffic study flaw because there was speculation, because he did not study to know that that was the peak.
I think this, the, 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 the peak is accepted by experts to be in the morning and in the afternoon. What you are, what you are adding is a dimension created by a school that has not been considered, considered. And so that is speculation because you don't have any concrete evidence of what impact it's had one way or another. And I think that's, that, that's the question.
I don't have enough information.
It's a question, that's right.
That's correct, I don't have enough information.
That's right. So, so your, your choice might be to either get that information or to approve it, but it's questionable as to whether or not you could deny it based on speculation.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Is, is that for your...
Other questions or comments, or should we move to motion phase? I'm hearing no comments, so we'll move to the motion phase. So I think summarizing what I've heard, we can make a motion to approve or deny, even though denying, you got to have a reason, one of the six, or you can move to have this continued.
And if we move to have it continued, what does the next meeting look like?
That's up to you. You can, you can continue it, obvi, we, we talked before about you want to continue it to a specific date. But you can also limit what evidence you could consider at that date if you want to.
Okay.
If, if you want to, if you want to put parameters on it, you can.
Okay.
Mr. Silverstein, do we have to continue it to a, to date certain?
You don't, you don't have to, but if you don't, then you've got to go through the, the advertising.
Right, and I just want the council to be aware of that.
Right.
Okay, all right. I, I'm in favor of continuing it because I think it would be fair to everybody. I think it'd be fair to the applicant to be able to take the time to get the information that we feel like we need to, to say, yeah, you have a compelling case that you've made here. I think it's fair to the expert citizen here to be able to look at the documents that they say they have so that, you know, he can then come back and say, my concerns are satisfied or my concerns are not satisfied because of X, Y, Z. So I would be in favor of continuing it and...
Without any limitation on what can be discussed?
I have no limitation, I would not unless somebody else wants to, you know, tell me otherwise, but I, I, you know.
Well, I appreciate the expert citizens' concerns regarding the environment. I think based on state and federal laws, I think they've been satisfied, I really do. I appreciate the concerns regarding traffic after nine o'clock, but as somebody who goes through that area on peak times, the traffic is worse at seven to nine and four to six. There is a queuing issue you have with the school and the carpool, but traffic is predominantly worse at, in, in, in your typical peak hour times. My concern is the site plan. I don't think the site plan jives with number three and provides harmony and unity with surrounding development. I think it is a sea of impervious surface, you've stuck a building on the far side of the site and a standalone canopy, gas station thing. I think it's totally underwhelming and not what we're looking for as a community. So I'm totally cool voting to deny it, or you can enhance the site plan.
We're at a point of making a motion.
If we continue this, are they allowed to modify their site plan in that period and come back to us with a different site plan, or does it need to stay the same site plan?
They can, they can make changes between now and then and give staff time to evaluate those and come back to you.
Well, I would be okay with that. I mean, you know, we all have our passion points and Don doesn't often express passion points for aesthetics. And when he does, I think everybody should sit up a little bit higher and go, listen, because, I mean, I think that's a big deal. I mean, I think the fact that you, and you understand the auto world, you, you understand a lot of the nuances about it and you, for you to look at this and say, this isn't adequate. I, I think it's worthwhile.
I mean, I, no disrespect, I, I feel like I'm looking at almost a truck stop type site. I mean, it's, you know, total open, impervious surface, it's just very underwhelming, it's just, it's not carry.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point.
And I have concerns with the...
And it's not my district, it's...
I know, I know.
But you're, you're doing such an eloquent job.
He's going to let him go.
I mean, you can make a motion to deny if it doesn't meet one of the six criteria.
I will say, I mean, I, I would love to give the applicant who has come this far in the process an opportunity to make it better. I understand others have some other concerns and have some questions that they would like addressed and I think it's fair to give them the opportunity to do that, so.
Yeah, and, and while they're doing that, I mean, I have concerns for the tra, I think it's trash that's kind of out in the middle, not screened by anything, you know, it, again, that's not in carry standards, you know, I'm looking at what, sixteen or seventeen loading places for vacuum spaces, right, you know, or thirteen or fourteen of them, you know, the, you know, there's, it just seems like, like so much, right? And it doesn't seem to, to fit carry.
Okay, so I'm, I'm hearing that we want to continue this. Can I get a motion?
Or, or deny.
Or deny.
Doesn't, if anybody wants to approve it, so.
Do we need a date to continue it too?
No.
I would recommend not having a date.
Make a motion to continue.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second and then the discussion. First of all, I want to know, we can have anything when we come back, what should we expect from the applicant? I'm sure they want to know what should they bring back? They can discuss anything because we haven't limited it. So they're going to make a presentation, are we going to go through the whole process? Have people in opposition, have people?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to go through the entire thing again, is what I understand. And you had information you wanted to submit, would you like to submit that now and then we can have that ready when we come back?
Assuming the continuance gets approved.
Assuming it gets approved, yes.
I, I think you could also assume that, that in the meantime, staff would meet with the applicant and attempt to narrow the issues that they've heard discussed this evening.
And, and that's a good, that's my point, is that since they can't talk with us...
Right.
Then I would like an open court for them to ask us what their, if, if they've got questions that they're supposed to address. Mine would be to, to cover parking, that extra hour overlapping the school time would be my, but I don't know whether that's...
They, they can't talk with you, but they've certainly heard you.
They, okay, that would be my, I'm just being very specific, that's my feedback I'm giving now.
As we leave tonight, assuming this is continued, we're back to where we were before. We can't talk to anybody, we can't hear anything else.
Questions now, whoever holds your peace.
What I'm hearing Mr. George say is you'd like an opportunity now for you to provide any direct feedback, because I'm sure Mr. Stires is going to want...
That's what I'm asking.
What are your direct?
I would like to be, for us to give direct feedback and, and let him ask questions if he's got things that, that he's fuzzy on that would help him because he can't come meet with us one-on-one and ask us questions.
So let me ask a procedural question, we're still in the middle of a motion, should we go ahead and see if the motion passes and at that point can we give feedback or are we shut out then?
I, I think as part of the discussion of this motion, you can open up the, that discussion to hear input from the applicant and staff if that's necessary. I think that's appropriate.
So, so yes, now is the time.
That's good. So that would be my first thing, would say just if it went till seven to ten and three to, three to five, three to six, then I'd be happy as a clam to hear that it goes down at nine fifteen, if that's the case.
Other information we want the applicant to provide?
I mean, I'm not going to design their site, I'm just letting you know what my concerns are.
Is it visual for you?
It's visual, I see very little green in the interior. Quite frankly, I don't know, you know, why they're not putting a convenience store in there, that's not my decision to make, but standalone canopies to me are not the most visually appealing thing in the world and, you know, I, I think there's work to be done there. I, I totally get the whole stacking, drive-through and the car wash thing, I'm, I'm not questioning their business model. I actually think the car wash building from the street is probably not that unattractive, but the site itself is underwhelming and, so I, I'm looking, I'm looking for more. I, I would, I would really, the, the disconnect between the gas station and the car wash itself to me is, is, is mind-boggling, honestly. And you have that, actually using that barrier in between there, so even if somebody wanted to walk over there, there, it, it's just an impediment, I just...
We will try to explain the business model better, why...
Actually, I get the business model. What you're not getting is I don't like the site plan. Right, and, you know, it's like a death of a thousand cuts, it's, it's, it's just a horrible place. And, you know, you could have six things and you just barely meet the spirit in the letter of the law, but, you know, it's going to take a lot to convince me on, on some of this traffic modeling. It's, it's an, it's a god awful place. It's jammed, it's queued up, you got the school next door, Campbell Road, you got the two roads on both sides here, you know, sometime in the past we should have looked at how the hell we ended up with two cut-through roads that go nowhere. And then, then you got the, the remaining triangle out there. So you've got a hurdle, I mean, you, you have a hurdle, I'm trying to be fair to you, but living over there, just, just the very thought that I've got, every day I got to go down that Jones Franklin Road and sit in that queue and now I got to look at this, you know, I guess it has to be if I have to do everything evidence-based, but I've got a real jaundice look at all, at, at, I, I'm, I'm taking it faith right now the LDO compliance. I think number three, two and three, I found, you know, just showing a couple pictures of the dilapidated stuff next to it as a surrounding use and this is better. This is just another more of the same that we don't need there. So I guess I have to understand how I have to apply my decision to two and three, but four, five and six, going to take a lot of, a lot of data that's going to convince me to change my mind there. That's why I'd rather just do it today and then face whatever legal challenges we have. I'd rather go, I'd rather move on.
We'd like to go ahead and move into evidence, all of the documents that we've submitted, including all the backup information by Mr. Travis Floyd at Kemble, Kemble Horn, as well as the backup analysis by Mr. Rich Kirkland. So we would ask that all of that information be submitted, introduced into evidence, as well as take judicial notice of the LDO, of the staff report, of the applications that's been filed, so that the information and the rec, is, the record is complete at this time with all of the information that we have presented. We would welcome the opportunity to come back and, you know, one thing that this, this illustration does not show is, is the extensive landscaping that is proposed at this site and we can address that and we can increase that with interior landscaping as well. We can look at reconfiguration, we certainly can look at the traffic during the school area, school hour and, and we'll work with staff. And of course, you can communicate to staff, staff can communicate to us and we can, and we can do what we can and we'll be glad to come back.
And I would ask that all of this be in the staff report ahead of time, not at the table. That would really help us.
That's helpful for me, that's helpful for me to understand. And the only thing I would add is that, you know, this is a general use district in which there are a lot of uses that are absolutely allowed at this location and we are only here because of the staff's position that this is a drive-through use.
Thank God.
A, a convenience store, a gas station, again, we want to make sure this, we want, we want this to be a good site, we want this something for the carry to feel good about. And if we can improve this site, we will improve this site, but, but there, there, we have purchased this property, it is not an interruption. And there is a long list of permitted uses that are allowed here with, with site plan approval with staff. And so we think that we will come up with a better product, working with, with you through this process than if we were to propose a site that would not come before you.
That's fair.
I'm going to tag on what Don said, I think that, when, what, I hear what Don's saying and I, I support him. I'd like to see this, this is, now that I'm, I actually thought this was like a Bunkies where they, you, you had attendance and then I realized it's self-serve, I heard that you drive it through yourself, so I, I just realized that when I asked that question. So, but I'm trying to figure out, this disjointed thing Don's talking about, I don't see how, I'd like to see where this traffic flow, if you're going to fill up before or after, it just does not, it doesn't look like it flows like Don's saying, it just looks like it's disjointed and you have to walk across all these people vacuuming their cars out to go get a snack and it just doesn't seem to me as, as safe as it could be.
Maybe photos from existing?
Or, or layouts, existing ones that work.
Yeah, we could, again, we have twenty-three of these, those, that are functioning extremely well and I think, and also some, I think some photo simulations, some artists' renderings of what this site with the layout at this location from the perimeter would also help explain what we're trying to do and why we think this is an appropriate, compatible.
Can I ask a quick question? Do you have this big sea of parking between the gas station area and the building, the car wash building because we require the building to be on the street and not the parking? Was that, or is this the way you always do it? This is the way you always do it? Okay.
This is our prototype, I mean, the thought process is, is people, excuse me, people enter the car wash, they go through the car wash, they come out and then they immediately hit the vacuum spaces. And then once they leave the vacuum spaces, they can either depart from the site or they can go to the queue. So, I mean, it, based off of our concept, it flows.
And that's the experience we've had in other locations about how people want to use the site. Now, we'll look at other configurations, but, you know, this is based upon how people like to use this type of car wash and what works, so you don't have problems with ingress and egress, you don't have stacking out into the streets, we, no one wants that. And so I do think that there is opportunities for some interior landscaping, we will look at additional layouts, but when I talked about our, our business model, it's based upon how people like to use these facilities and, you know, and the popularity and receptivity that... that, that they've been, that they have experienced at other locations.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I respect that you reminded me of the other uses, you know, I appreciate that, because that, that, that is a critical factor. And I know that during the whole proceeding tonight, we learned a lot more about the environment, and I appreciate that that all came forward. The area is under siege, you gotta respect that, and you ought to be talking to those folks, too. You get them on your side, and it just, you know, it makes a better community, it makes a better relationship all around. You've identified a lot tonight that was a learning curve for us, and I think it's important, since we can't, I can't talk to my constituents, which is frustrating, it's nice that you keep them in the loop and try to work with them. Reasonable people come to the table.
I definitely, I don't know if the gentleman's still here, yes, I, I will, we will definitely make sure I get his contact information, and we will try to be...
I appreciate that.
Certainly, yeah, we will, again, we would, in, given the alternative uses, you know, we would humbly and respectfully believe that the result that we would get through this process, an ultimate approval, would both be better than an alternative that we would be able to build by right without city council approval, or that the courts would order. And so we would be willing to come back, because we think of the three options we see, that would be the optimal option of the other two.
So last chance for comments before...
Is there no neighborhood meeting requirement for QJs at all? But we have had, some have had them.
No. Usually for quasi-judicial, that's not been my experience.
Okay, maybe they, they were just individual meetings with the applicants.
The applicant can always set up a meeting with the surrounding neighborhood, but there's not required by the ODO.
But not a neighborhood requirement, okay.
So the clerk, so the clerk could provide, you know, contact information for anybody that reached out to us, if he wanted to so, reach out to those people.
Certainly.
Not that we could consider it as evidence, but he certainly could.
Any other comments before we lose our voice until this comes back to us again?
I will say, Mr. Hill, the COO of the company, says that he, based, he is, appreciates your comments, and he does believe that we can't address these, that we are allowed to come back.
Good. Okay, we have a motion to continue this to an undetermined date, just to be clear, and all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. So this will be continued until another date. Thank you, Mr. Stires.
Thank you, we'll see you another day.
We have no other items on our agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we adjourn, thank you.